Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and call the City Council for September 7, 2010. To order first thing, as always, on the agenda is roll call and determination of the quorum. Amber, if you would, please.
Peterson. Wyffenbach.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Haddock.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Costello.
Here.
Quaker.
Here.
Wa.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Mason.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Very good. Just a couple of reminders for some housekeeping items. If you do have a cellphone or pager, please turn that off or put it into vibrate mode. We certainly appreciate that. Also, if you wish to speak to any item, either on the agenda or during the public comment period, we do have speaker request forms. They look like this. They're to your left, to our right, over on the media table. If you could please fill that out with your name and also the item that you'd like to speak to. That way, as we make our way down the agenda, we'll make sure that we do not overlook you. Next thing on the agenda, as always, is invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by Pastor Greg Blanc. If everyone will please rise and then remain standing, because we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance immediately after the invocation. Pastor?
As usual, on behalf of the church community, just want to say thank you so much for your sacrifice and service to Rapid City. Let's pray. Father, we humbly open this meeting inviting your presence here. These men and women give so much of their time and their lives, and I can't imagine the pressure that they must have to make decisions that will bless you. And yet, your word says that if any man or any woman lacks wisdom, that they can ask of you, and that you would give in abundance. So tonight, God, I pray that these people would feel your presence. I pray that the pressure wouldn't be on them, that they would relax and look to you. Lord, you love the city of Rapid City, and we ask your blessing on it. Thank you so much for Mayor Hanks and the City Council and the other officials that are represented here. Guide them with your eye. And we ask this for your glory and your name. Amen. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Pastor, always a pleasure to see you. Next thing, as always, is the adoption of the agenda. Are there any additional items that need to be added to the agenda? I do have one note here, and that is on item number... If I can find it here. Jason, what item number was it that we actually need to make a correction?
Fifty-one?
It was a numbering of a...
Two.
One oh five? Okay, item number one oh five. If you'd please just note that that should actually read the very last line, tack increment district item or district fifty-four, not thirty-four. So we'll just make sure that as that is read in, we'll just make sure that... Deb, if you make sure that you actually mention that's fifty-four, not thirty-four, as we read that in. Okay. Any additional items to be added to the agenda tonight? If so, please turn on your light. Any additional items? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to approve the agenda with a correction to that item. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We need to approve the minutes for the July fourteenth, 2010, and the August third, fourth, eleventh, twelfth, and sixteenth, 2010 special council meetings, and also the August sixteenth, 2010 regular council meeting. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We're on to awards and recognitions. We do not have any tonight, as we always take those up at our second meeting of the month. So in a couple of weeks, we'll be recognizing both some employees and also a veteran of the month. We're on to the general public comment period. This is a time for members of the public to discuss or express concerns to the council on any issue not on the agenda. Action will not be taken at tonight's meeting on any issue not on the agenda, except by placement on the agenda by the unanimous vote of the council members present. I do have two speaker request forms during the general public comment period. Please keep in mind, this is a presentation period, so we do not have debate, but what we do is we do time this, and you'll have three minutes. First, I have Jim Meyerhouse. And Mr. Meyerhouse, if you come up and identify yourself, and we appreciate you coming in. I know some of the council members were looking for a quick update as far as economic development.
So we'll give you a quick one, and I also gave you a one page that gives you pretty much a good background on what the Business Development Center is about. You have a facility now that has about $4.2 million invested in it. That's in construction. That was the cost of the building, and it was funded various ways. Probably interest to you, because I know it was how much economic capture fund money is in the Business Development Center. There was a completing of Phase Two was the largest increment. It was $350,000, and that was made in 2006. For those of you that have looked at that, remember the building coming out of the ground. The back of that bill, forty thousand, of that 30,000 square feet, was a gravel floor, and we really didn't have a good... Well, we didn't have all the money to begin with, so we went and said, okay, well, as we develop a plan of build-out for that building, that went for that purpose. So in actual help to companies, 134,000 and some change in May of 2007 helped augment the build-out for C-Lock Technology, which is a... was started by Dr. Zimmerman coming out of the School of Mines. He has since left that organization, and in fact, it has a name change. It's Evergreen Energy. But so that one is the money there. And then, of course, lastly, your recent approval of 200,000 to finish the space for CAT. And I want to note there, that $200,000 went straight into the economy in building workers for construction workers and materials. So it wasn't a gift. It helped us. And when they leave, that build-out reverts to the Business Development Center and is part of our capital structure. So not a, I don't think, a bad investment for forty or thirty-nine employees, starting with an average salary of 42,000 plus benefits. So I think that probably pretty well outlines it. We have thirteen companies in the facility now, and our first one was Evans and Sutherland, as Mr. Costello knows. That company essentially sold off and closed that, and another company took its place. That would have been our first graduate company. However, a new clock started on that one, so it's Helsis, and they are obviously in their first year now, as opposed to their last year, because that first company folded and allowed us... We put in a new lease then, and they go on a new timeline. Our next company to leave will be, and I'm discounting the School of Mines students that are there, because that was an interim thing, as you're well aware, until they built their chem building. But the next first company to leave in 2012 that has a deadline of five years is Innovative Systems, and that is the group that is making adapting software and hardware for hardwire presentation of... to small telecoms for cable TV and the like. Roger Music is a principal of that from Mitchell. Roger and I are scheduled to meet early next year to get set up what he's going to do. He's told me informally that he's looking for a spot in Rapid City to continue the program, which is exactly what we want to happen. So we think that that's good. And lastly, I guess, and I just... I know I'm jumping around here a bit, but I think most of it's outlined on the other. Just to give you a quick status of CAT, we have... The rugs went down today. They're moving in their servers tomorrow. They hope to be start employees on the twenty-second of September. So it's really been a great benefit to some Fortune 100 company that decides to come, and we were able to provide something in three months to their specifications, which 10 years ago, we couldn't have done if we wanted to. So, any questions?
Very good. We certainly appreciate the update. Jim, you guys always do a great job with that incubator, and bringing jobs in CAT is just another great example of how we were fortunate enough to have the infrastructure in place. So thank you for the report.
Thank you a lot.
We also have a request to speak during the general public comment period. This is from Bill Freitag. And this is on the McCarthy refund. So there again, Bill, if you just identify yourself for the record, and then you got... you'll have three minutes.
Bill Freitag.
There is no member.
I believe the McCarthy refund's been continued to Public Works. So what I would like to suggest is that at the next Public Works, I have some information that I wanted to present, and what it deals with is Keith Lesperance was introduced into the argument on August 2nd, and it was said that Keith said it was appropriate that that refund would go out. I've known Keith since second grade, and there's a real problem here. And through the documentation, the way I've put it together, and the facts I've substantiated, it makes Keith look like he approved a $20,466 payment, and then he never... Then, by his own admission, he was never aware of any funds coming back, and he never was aware of the May eighteenth, 2009 council meeting where the McCarthy-A1 Steam Brothers dispute was discussed and decided upon. So he didn't know those two things, but now he's being presented as if on August 2nd, you were told that he said this was appropriate again. So then you can assume he's saying it's appropriate to spend another $18,000. So that puts Keith in a bad spot. When I brought it to Keith's attention in an email and to get it confirmed, so that I'm not saying Keith told me so, he was told by his superiors not to talk to me, that I was to talk to the council. So at Public Works, I would like to address those questions to Mr. Lesperance and to have that cleared up. Part of the confusion here is the title of his job as risk manager. Listen, these sewer backups don't got very much to do with Keith. They got everything to do with Mr. Ellis and his departments, but not with the risk manager. The risk manager deals with the insurance company and makes sure the documentation for the deductibles and everything between the City of Rapid City and Travelers Insurance is in place. So he hardly knows whether there was... He don't go out and measure it. He depends on what Robert Ellis's department, the information they give him. So we have to clear some of that up, so that my documentation does not put him in a bad light that I don't believe he deserves. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Freitag. I do not have any additional speaker request forms. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak to any item not on the agenda? Anyone else? We don't want to overlook anyone. If not, we will move on. We're on to the non-public hearing items. These are items one through 119 inclusive, and the Chair would look for a motion to open the public comment on items one through eighty-five inclusive. One through eighty-five, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We are taking public comment on items one through eighty-five. I do have one speaker request form. That's from Mr. Freitag on item number fifty. Item number fifty, everyone. There again, Mr. Freitag, just please identify yourself, and then the floor is yours.
Bill Freitag. On item number fifty, I tried to click on it, but there was no links for anything, so I don't know what you're confirming or acknowledging, because I couldn't read anything. But here's what... This has to do with Melody Acres. What I would encourage you to do is this, and I would like to bring this up at Public Works at your next Public Works meeting, is that the City Council model a refund ordinance, not a policy, not a resolution, create an ordinance like you already have for refunds in growth management. You can structure it, if you look at Rapid City Municipal Code 1512290, Section 108.6. I'll say it again, 15.12.290, Section 108.6. That's an existing refund ordinance that you already have on the books. So I would suggest that you build one for... Create one for growth management that mirrors this one or is similar to this one. And when you get the expected, you can't do this, it's not legal, I would hope that you hire an outside counselor to advise you on the legality of whether you can create an ordinance similar to an ordinance you already have on your books. That's all. That's from Melody Acres. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freitag. I do not have any additional speaker request forms on any of the items that we're dealing with, and that is items one through eighty-five inclusive. One through eighty-five inclusive. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on any item one through eighty-five? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to close the public comment period.
Still.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. We're on to the consent calendar. These are items one through seventy-six. One through seventy-six. Is there anything that we need to pull from the consent calendar? I do have a note here. Item number fifty-three. I think we used... I'm sorry, fifty-one.
Are you going to bring up that?
Fifty-one. We just need to make a comment on that. Any additional items? Let's go to Alderman Bill Wa.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like item number sixty-five pulled.
Okay, item number sixty-five. Go to Alderman Deb Haddock.
Eleven and fifty-eight are the same, so both of those, they're the same thing.
We can leave... We actually had the discussion. One is just to... They're both just acknowledged. We can leave them both on there.
Either one would be good to pull up. And then the number eight for the audit plan. Number nine, the growth management. And forty-one on the determination of 813 spaces for Central, fifty on Melody Acres, and I think that's it.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you. I would also like to get item number sixty-two pulled.
Okay. Sixty-two?
Yes.
Any others?
No.
Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item thirty-three through thirty-eight, please.
Thirty-three through thirty-eight.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, sorry.
And let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. Item twenty-six. Any additional items? Let's go to Alderman Deb Haddock.
Just on the language, I think we're switching the language a little bit. Thank you.
Okay. Any additional items that need to be pulled from the consent calendar? We are dealing with a consent calendar. This is items one through eighty-five inclusive, with the exception of eight, nine, twenty-six, thirty-three through thirty-eight, forty-one, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-three, sixty-two, and sixty-five. Any additional items? If not, the Chair would look for a motion to approve the consent calendar, items one through forty... I'm sorry, one through seventy-six inclusive, with the exception of items eight, nine, twenty-six, thirty-three through thirty-eight, forty-one, fifty, fifty-one, fifty-three, sixty-two, and sixty-five.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? It's going to take a minute here. Roy, are we running into problems with our... Are any of them working? Oh, Aaron yours is working. Mr. Mason, yours is not working?
Yeah.
Sam, yep. Do me a favor, everyone. If you could just turn your speaker request light on. Let's just double check. It seemed to be pretty good here. Yep, I think. Mr. Mason, we'll work on that, but if you have something, just make sure you give me a wave, and if you need to interrupt me, please do so. Okay? Very good. Let me clear the decks here. Very good. So everyone clear on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Item number eight, and that would be under Public Works, and let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker. If you could please read that in.
Item number eight is to acknowledge the report on the audit plan, and for the sake of discussion, I will move to acknowledge.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Alderman Quaker, did you want to speak to that?
No.
Okay. I might take your name off there. Let's go to Alderman Deb Haddock.
Yes, I guess I was just wondering if it went anywhere when Jordan had brought up something about performance and operational audits, and if we were going to do anything. I remember you saying something even at a gender view that you thought in some circumstances that would be a good idea, and how if we wanted to do some of those, how would we get that started, or how would we actually help you get it started?
Sure. And with the council's indulges, the comment I made was a fact that I think that we could certainly start taking a look at some of these. My preference is to wait until after the budget, and then let's look at the departments and maybe periodically pick one or two of the departments and actually do an audit on an annual basis. And that way, we can rotate everything through, but we'll certainly take a look and see what the appropriate process is.
Thank you, Mayor, because I think it's a good idea. We did go to a meeting today, and it did talk about how government saves, but it should be talking about how government spends. And I think in some cases, we can cut that spending before we hit that savings, because if you can do it that way, it seems the bottom line is you wouldn't be spending as much, and you wouldn't have to worry about saving in the end. So again, I think that's a good idea, and I appreciate that. Mayor was at that meeting, and I think it was a good meeting and something very positive for one of our senators to say. Thank you.
Thank you. And I see Mr. Mason has his light working. Did you have something to say, or are you just testing your light?
No.
Okay. Mr. Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, and my apologies for my light not working. I just want to add in addition to Alderman Haddock's comment that my overall goal in looking at that is not only just how to save, but the only way to do that would be really to have the data and the information, as far as I understand it, to really collect that information over a period of time. And that's my goal, is to find new ways of saving money and look at our operations as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Alderman Quaker, if you could please read item number nine, please.
Item number nine is to acknowledge the status of the growth management report. Yield to the floor.
With approval.
Yep. We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Deb Haddock.
Just a quick on the status of growth management. I'm not opposed for us waiting in some circumstances, but we are changing our budget as a city council, and it seems like if you want to cut some of the spending and lower that budget, it'd be a good place to start, because based on the Leahy report, it kind of sets forward some of those cuts that we could make for that spending. So to me, it's not that... I don't think the mayor's doing anything wrong in one sense, but the other is that maybe as a council, to move that forward a little bit, where would be those spending areas in that department where they feel that not only there's a savings, but we're overspending over that we don't need at this point in order to cut government a little bit. So again, just needed... Thought that was something to be said for what's coming up, and we do have the budget on Monday. So something for the council to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank Alderman Haddock for her comments, and along with finding cost savings, one of the ways to find cost savings is to increase efficiencies within the existing operations. And page nine of the Leahy report, which is linked to the city's website, you know, has a number of recommendations that really don't have anything directly to do with staffing and who people report to. And that's one of the reasons that I brought this up, is I would like to proceed with implementing as many of those recommendations as possible, or maybe we need to do a review of the review of the recommendations. But I would like to do more than just acknowledge the report. I mean, one example, third bullet point down in number nine is, page number nine, is the city should publish and maintain a Rapid City Development Review Handbook that sets forth clear, simple, and consistent guidance to applicants for all review procedures. That's a policy statement, and that really is something that needs to start or at least come through the city council. Discussions on changes in the future land use planning process and modifying the plan development regulations, you know, those are things that I think we can move forward on now, and I would rather not wait until next year, you know, to do that. So is... I guess, not sure who to ask us to, but how do we proceed with these other excellent recommendations and move forward? Mayor?
Thank you. And we had this discussion, I think, not only at council, but also at the committee meetings, and one of the things that I committed to, to the City Council, is to take a look and make implementation of changes by the first of the year. There again, we're moving forward with a number of the recommendations, including some that Alderman Quaker mentioned, and I would say probably... You would probably see some recommendations coming forward in the next 30 days. The other thing that I also committed to was actually forming a working committee to take a look at structurally how to make some of these changes, including folks that would have input from the development community. So there again, we continue to move forward. My hope is that, and my commitment to the council, we're going to have literally everything, all the recommendations, if not completed, at least moving forward by the first of the year. So we're certainly not letting moss grow on the Leahy report, so we are moving forward with those.
If I could, Mayor.
Yep. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
And one final note that I think is important, and it is an important distinction, and that is, is the link on the website says the Leahy Planning Second Floor Review. You know, the reality is, is that this report, although a well-done report with some good recommendations, is focused mainly on growth management as it relates to the development process. There are other areas on second floor, including the city attorney's office and also the Public Works Department, which may have been addressed somewhat peripherally in this report, but this is not a holistic second floor review. This is a review of growth management. So I'm hoping at some point that we, as a council, one way or another, will be willing to undertake similar reviews, either internally or externally. We need to discuss the plan there, but I think we need to review all of those functions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. So to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a tendency to agree with some comments that were made here, and directly understanding that some of the recommendations were policy changes, that's a discussion that council leadership should take under, or if there's, if it's in the plan somewhere that maybe I missed it. So, but the other, the other thing we're talking about was some of the recommendations to consolidate, and, which would actually have a direct impact on the budget. I would hope that we could instill those prior to the budget, so knowing that those attrition will account for elimination of some of those positions as they're brought together before the budget time. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good point, and just so you know, that, I know Pauline will be looking at some changes, as we have already moved the engineers over to public works, so we will need to make those adjustments in the budget before final approval. So, we will certainly make sure that happens. With that, let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. The aldermen, this book have good ideas. My concern is that when you're trying to make a lot of big changes, that rushing ahead can end up wasting you money, because you have to go back and redo if you haven't thought things out completely. So, I'm comfortable with giving you the time that you need.
Thank you. And just for point of information for the council, I expect at the next legal and finance committee that I will have a name of the members that I will appoint to the committee to actually start looking at the process and, and some of those changes. So, I was hoping, and it was my intent, to actually get through the budgetary process first, because that, of course, is probably the biggest responsibility this council has every single year, is the adoption of the, of the budget. And then keep in mind, any, any changes that we make, we will make those adjustments through supplemental appropriation adjustments into the 2011 budget. So, it will certainly be dealt with. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to acknowledge. Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Let's see, we are to item number twenty-six. Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in, please?
Item number twenty-six is to approve the Omaha pedestrian crossing relocation. It says CIP project, estimated cost of $185,000. Yield to the floor.
Can we have a motion, please?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that the original goal of this project was to restore what had been the case a number of years ago, before the Department of Transportation, with the city's concurrence, at least I think it was with the city's concurrence a number of years ago, moved the light down a half block. I am in favor of moving it back, but I do have a concern now about this $185,000 price tag, and I'm wondering if this is a situation of, 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 you know, a want versus a need, and if, and if it's really necessary to move this forward at this time, or if we could, could wait until next year and see the condition of our CIP contingency and other funds, knowing that our sales tax is down this year, although it's not down as much as it was last year. I'm questioning the wisdom of, of a $185,000 expenditure. I thought it was going to be a lot less than this. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I have to agree with Alderman Quaker. At this point, it, it looks good on Sixth Street coming down, and it's something that I was wanting, but not for $185,000. I agree with the same thing. It's something I want, but I don't think it's something I need or the taxpayers. So, I'll be voting no on this, and I apologize, because I did not vote no earlier at the legal and finance. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Robert Ellis.
Go ahead, please.
Robert, does this put that intersection on a non-through area of, of Omaha Street? If, if we move the pedestrian crossing, are they talking about moving the light?
Robert, why don't you go through quickly and explain the project?
Yeah, certainly. What they're looking at doing is relocating the existing signal that's in the mid-block location. They'll move it to this intersection right outside here at Sixth Street. It'll probably be on the west side, so it won't be on the east side to minimize some of those conflicts. So, it'll be La Costa Restaurant. It'll be in that quadrant over there. And if I may offer a suggestion, I'm not a proponent, proponent or opponent to this project. I'm just the person charged with designing it and bidding it. Advertising Authority is listed $185,000. We could open bids, see what kind of prices we get, and it, it may be that the price is well below that. It could be that it's, it's above $185,000, too, but when you know exactly what that cost is, that might be the best time to make the decision on whether or not to move forward with this. You could reject all bids, and then that would essentially kill that project, and we could discuss moving forward at a later date in time.
Take Mr. Wyffenbach, you still have the floor.
Thank you, Robert. My, my concern, number one, is, is the price, obviously, and that's a, that's an option. We appreciate that. But the other, the other thing is, that's a non-through street. What, is there gonna have two lights there, or just one? I mean, there'll be a, a light that'll be missing on that through street then?
Mr. Ellis?
On Fifth Street? They take the light off Fifth Street?
No.
No, and the light at Fifth will stay there, and then we'll have a light at Sixth Street. This light at Six and a Half will go away. So, you won't be adding any more lights. You'll end up with the same.
So, you're gonna have a, within a block of each other?
Yeah. Yes.
Or, I mean.
And again, the reason I believe this project was moved forward was because part of that Roger Brooks study was connecting the Civic Center with the Performing Arts Center and making that corridor utilizing Sixth Street, making it appealing for pedestrians to move between those facilities. That's how this project ended up on our plan.
Okay. I, I'll yield to the floor.
Thank you. Let's, let's go to, let's see, I'm gonna go to, let's go to Alderman Dave, Dave Davis, who has not had the opportunity to speak yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Robert Ellis, if I may.
Sure, go ahead, please.
Robert, was there a safety issue in this, or was it simply because of the, the Brooks study? Was there a, it seemed like there was some discussion in the past that people were using the crosswalk at Sixth without the light, and that this was, the idea was to move the light to protect the pedestrian? Is that correct?
That was, that was one component of it. People follow the path of least resistance when they're moving from that side of the street to this side of the street. They're wanting to move down that corridor. Moving it, the, the signal to the half-block location, some people were not utilizing the signal at all and continued to cross at Sixth Street. So, that was a component of this project.
Thank you. Mr. Davis, if you'd like it, sir.
Do you feel that moving at that half-block will accomplish the end result that you've described? I mean, are, are we talking a, a life safety issue here? By, by, $185,000 is $185,000, but we lose somebody's life, it's not very much money. So, that's really the question. Are, are we talking about saving somebody's life by moving this light?
I think people will cross the street utilizing the signal more at Sixth Street than they do at Six and a Half. I think people are gonna cross wherever they feel is most convenient, Sixth Street is the most convenient location.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman, Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I guess if there was a traffic study that said at crossing, there, there would be more issues at one than the other. I would understand that, but because we think it, they would probably cross at Sixth Street more than Seventh. I, I'm just, at one point, I was with the Roger Brooks and lining everything up, but I'm also looking for cost savings and what we can make a difference on. And $185,000, I would throw out a motion if we could reject all bids and see if we can get that bid lower, just to see. I don't think there's nothing hurt by this. Robert, are we delaying this project or doing anything that might hurt this project by delaying it by rejecting all bids?
We don't have, we don't have any bids. This is to give authority to go out for bids.
Sorry. About what you said, Robert, I guess, on the 185.
Yeah. If, if this were approved tonight, we would advertise it, collect the bids, open the bids, and come back to this body for an award recommendation. So, you could evaluate the prices that we get at the bid, and if you feel that this is a priority for the city, you could either award it, or if you felt prices were too high, reject all bids. We don't do the project.
Okay. But we did throw out there, we have $185,000, so sometimes that doesn't help to, to throw out the number first and then come back and reject all bids. So, I don't know, after listening to that, how that would help. So, I guess I'm not, um, what, well, Mr. Davis, I'll just ask you a question. Why was it moved in the first place, Robert? From Sixth to Seventh? Does anybody know?
Marsha, I think you can probably answer that. I think that was basically, I'm, I'm gonna put words in Marsha's mouth, but that was basically pressure from the state DOT.
DOT made that determination over the objections of the city staff. I personally appeared at several public hearings and objected to that because of the impact on the Sixth Street corridor and the adopted downtown master plan that showed that corridor as being part of it. It was to get more vehicles through the intersection at Fifth Street and Omaha Street, and the, the focus was on vehicles and not on people crossing.
So, was it, can I ask her a question?
Go ahead, please.
So, that safety factor was more based on vehicles than people?
It was not on safety, it was on volume. It was on getting more cars through the intersection of Fifth Street and Omaha Street more quickly.
And I'm trying to figure out how a block would make a difference, or a half-block would make a difference on that pedestrian crossing for $185,000. I know it's, it's for the corridor, it's, and I'm for that, but I'm not willing to take a whole light in a whole pedestrian crossing and move it, because we have a Roger Brooks study, and we think it might be better on there. It's, it's not that I'm objective in one sense, and you don't wanna fight one sense, but then the other thing is $185,000. So, I gotta look at the cost savings of just leaving it where it's at as well, and will it work there? Yes, it will. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to, let's see, I'm gonna go to Alderman Bill Waugh, who has not had the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. My inclination right now is to vote for it, let it go to bid, see what the bids come back at. But in that time process that we're going through, maybe we could station somebody out of traffic engineering to look and see how many people are actually crossing at Sixth Street, opposed to going up a half a block and using the light. So, we have some more data when we come to the bid letting and whether we should even go forward. So, that would be my recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason, who has not had the opportunity to speak yet.
Thank you, Mayor. Just in response to something that Alderwoman Hadcock presented, and talking about advertising and throwing out the figure of a one, $185,000 to start with, I really appreciate that comment, because I, I think that in the process of negotiating in any sort of, you know, free-market commercial transaction, it's, it's pretty standard to lowball your first estimate and see where they come back with. I, I guess I agree that at $185,000, that seems pretty steep for what we're really asking, and I guess I would also prefer to lower that price and see if there's a contractor that can meet that low price with the market. I do understand where Alderman Wa feels that we need to collect more information on this bid, but I, I just feel like it, it wouldn't hurt to start out with a, a lower number on this bid. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I had a couple questions that, or maybe as I speak, we can answer them, but as, as the dynamics of the downtown change, looking for congestion in, in the West Main and St. Joe thoroughfares that go from east to west, I would believe that, or I have seen over the period of time since the new Omaha Street's been built, that the traffic has increased there substantially. I'm not sure if our city staff has the expertise to, to do that traffic study, because I know in talking to, you know, like, they're building the new Walmart over there on Fifth Street, and one of the big things that happens over there is they're talking about the placement of these, of these stoplights, and how they monitor the traffic and, and the thoroughfare there. So, if it, I'm not sure that putting a, changing a stoplight that the DOT has already done the research on is most prudent by us as city councils. So, I mean, if, I mean, there's, there's a couple questions here that leave it open in my mind. If, if we had a traffic study that said that the increased traffic on Omaha, due to the congestion, which we want, which we're trying to create downtown, we're trying to get people to come downtown and stay and not drive through. So, I, I'm not sure. Maybe that question would be to Robert. Would, do we have the expertise to do a traffic study there, and what would happen if we moved this stop sign? Or this stoplight?
Mr. Ellis?
Well, I, I think you're talking two different things. You're talking for vehicles. If you wanna push as many cars through that intersection as you can, you wouldn't leave this, the, the signal where it is now at Six and a Half. If your goal is to enhance pedestrian safety, make it more easily accessible from the Civic Center to downtown, moving the signal is the best thing. So, what weighs more, vehicles or pedestrians? And, and there's no way to say, you know, one is better than the other. It's really what's your goal? Is it pedestrian or vehicle traffic?
I appreciate that, Robert, because one of my concerns would obviously be, I mean, there's only, there's, the main thoroughfare from east to west through our town is becoming Omaha Street, and it's increasingly, as our north-south traffic increases, our east-west traffic increases on Omaha and those types of places. And so, I guess that's the consideration that we have to, to look at, and, and, and I'm not sure that I have the ability to, or the expertise to make that decision. So, I appreciate it, Robert. Thank you.
Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In response to a, a comment by Alderman Wyffenbach, either Marsha or Robert, if I may, Mr. Mayor, whoever could answer this question. Has there been a traffic study on Omaha since the reconstruction?
Marsha? Or Robert?
As part of this intersection, there was extensive discussions and review of that with the DOT engineers. In fact, I believe that their staff out of Pier was involved with that in addition to the city's traffic engineer.
And what, what were the findings of that study?
DOT was agreeable to moving it to Sixth Street.
Okay. And as far as the traffic volume, has traffic volume increased or decreased on Omaha since the reconstruction?
Marsha?
I have to look at the numbers. Again, what we've seen with all of our traffic volumes is that they continue to increase each year, and, and that traffic count book is available online, but it shows an overall increase in, in volumes in all of our routes over time.
Okay. Well, that contradicts something I heard earlier, which was that the traffic on Omaha actually decreased since the reconstruction, that it inadvertently rerouted more traffic to Main and St. Joe. So, I'll have to take a look at that. In the end, this really is about pedestrian safety for me, and I, I do believe they would be safer crossing at Sixth Street than the mid-block. If you were to go down there during festivals and watch people cross, very few people end up naturally progressing to Six and a Half Street to cross. It's usually they're playing Frogger at Seventh or playing Frogger at Sixth. And from my personal experience watching, most people go to Sixth. But all that, at this point, could essentially be moot, because really, we're just asking to go out for bids. So, I'm in favor of setting this out for bids.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just actually wanted a little bit of clarification from Marsha on one of her last statements. Did you say there was a review done, or a study done by the Department of Transportation, and is there a difference?
Let's go to Marsha Elkins.
I don't know that there's a difference. My understanding is that the DOT staff in Pier, in conjunction with John Les and Monica Heller here at the city of Rapid City, along with Robert Ellis, all were involved in discussions and review of data and, and analysis of that intersection. I'm not sure I know what you, how you would determine the difference between a study, analysis, or a review.
Thank you. I guess what I was wondering is, I, if I heard Alderman Costello correctly, he asked if there was a new study conducted, and then I just want clarification, because it sounded like you said that there was just a review of the existing study, and I, I guess I was still kind of wondering whether a new study has been conducted over the prior, not just analyzing the prior with the new data. If you could please clarify on that.
Marsha?
I am not aware of any independent traffic impact analysis, which would be a TIA that's been done for that corridor. As part of any construction project that DOT does, they do an analysis of data. I am aware that they've gone back when that intersection came up and looked at turning movement counts and looked at volumes before the DOT would agree to enter into an agreement with the city to allow that to be moved. I'm not sure how you would classify that, and I guess I was not specifically involved in the detailed discussion, but one of those folks would probably be able to provide more information.
I appreciate that. And just one more question for clarification, just to make sure I'm hearing this correctly. So, no new data was actually collected off the street to actually find verifiably what the new traffic flow and numbers are? Is that correct?
Marsha?
I believe that they looked at the traffic counts that are done on an annual basis. The count book is done and updated for the various routes on a, over time, and there are some existing count stations that are done where they collect data on an ongoing basis. But Robert was involved in those discussions. Maybe he knows more detail. I, I do believe that they did some traffic turning counts at various times. I saw some requests for additional staff to assist in that, so.
Thank you, Marsha, and I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion? If not, let me, let me see if I can give a little bit of history on this, because some on the council were actually here when we started this discussion almost three years ago. There was a lot of discussion as far as the need to create a pedestrian crossing that people would use, and that was, of course, at Sixth Street. I will tell you that this was presented to the council about two and a half years ago. We've talked about this probably a dozen different times in different presentations, and I know that Marsha, myself, Monica Heller, Robert Ellis have all been involved in heavily trying to persuade the state DOT to actually allow us to move this pedestrian crossing. It took almost, what, Marsha, a year? It took almost, what, Marcia, a year and a half for them to finally grant us the authority to actually move that pedestrian crossing? You know, the question is, will anybody use it? What I would do is I would encourage you to actually come down and sit in my office for a couple of hours and watch how many people actually jaywalk across Omaha Street at any given time during the day because they're not going to walk half a block to a light and then turn around and walk half a block back to the east to get back on the path to Memorial Park. Is this a safety issue? In my mind, yes, it is. If I'm not mistaken, I think we've had some near misses. As a matter of fact, I thought recently we actually had, we had someone hit down there just recently, didn't we, Fire Chief Mike? I see within the last two weeks, three weeks? There was a gentleman that, as a matter of fact, I remember seeing the report that he got hit pretty well by a, as a matter of fact, it was a pickup, and got thrown quite a ways. And so, this is a safety issue. So, with that, keep in mind, the only thing that we're doing here is giving authority to go out for a bid. Mr. Wyffenbach, you've already.
That was the question I was going to ask you because it does, on the paper, it says differently than what we're looking at. So, it says, Mr. Mayor, it says on item number 26, it says approve Omaha pedestrian crossing relocation. And, but what you're saying is request for advertising authority? So, which one is it? Clarify.
Robert, did I misspeak?
This is.
Go ahead.
This is an advertising authority.
Okay.
Just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Very good. Everyone clear on that? We're going out, we're allowing staff to go out basically for bids. And Alderman Wyffenbach, thank you for pointing that out because that is not very clear in the, on the agenda. Thank you. Any further discussion? Marcia, did you have anything else to add? If not, we're going to go to a vote.
I would just reference the numbers that are in the count book, went on Mount Rushmore to Fifth, Omaha Street, between Mount Rushmore and Fifth Street, went from 29,465 to 31,579, 2007 to 2009. Same section from Fifth Street, or, yeah, from Fifth to East on Omaha, went from 24,008, 25 to 29,000. So, there's been substantial growth over the last three years.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to approve to go out for bids on the Omaha pedestrian crossing relocation project. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Did we have, let's take a quick roll call, let's just make sure we get this right.
Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
Waugh?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mason?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Haddock?
Aye.
Motion passes on an eight to two vote. Correct? Very good. Thank you, everyone. Robert, I imagine we'd probably see this back in the next 30 days?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay, very good. Thank you for the discussion, everyone. Okay, that was item number 26. Next, we go to items 33 through 38. At an Alderman, let's see, Alderman Quaker, could you go ahead? Let me ask this, do we want to take these one at a time or is there a generic question?
Mr. Mayor, it's a generic question.
Okay. Why don't we do it this way? Alderman Quaker, and certainly at your discretion, if you'd like to take up items 33 through 38, they're all somewhat related, and then we can have discussion, and if we need to break those out, we can. With that, Alderman Quaker.
Items 33 through 38, our construction fees for Eglwin Street, Copperfield Vista's Dakota Craft, Water Main Extension, Sixth Street, Water Main, Mall Drive Water Transmission, Oversizing, and Mall Drive Water Transmission, Main Frontage, I would move to approve all items 33 through 38.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve items 33 through 38 inclusive. With that, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for, I believe it would be Robert or Robert or Marcia, whichever one answers. Are these fees that are being established for hookup fees?
Robert?
Yes, they are. Technically, we call them construction fees, and the reason we do these, the city has a cost on water sewer mains where we pay for oversizing, generally speaking. A developer is required to put in, say, an eight-inch line. We want a 16-inch line because that's what our master plan calls for. We pay for the oversizing of that line, and then we've established the benefiting area, whoever is benefiting from this oversized water main, so that when they do hook up to our system, they pay that construction fee so that we can recoup that oversizing cost back. So, generally speaking, that's why we do these resolutions.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a history of people actually paying these?
Certainly, yes. We.
And we have a way of keeping track of them?
We do. We track this in our GIS database, so when they do go to get a building permit, we can ensure that we're collecting that water sewer construction fee if one exists.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval of items 33 through 38 inclusive. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Alderman Quaker, could you please read in item number 41?
Item number 41 is approval of the determination of 813 parking spaces for Central High School for the sake of discussion, I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Haddock.
Just for clarification for the public, what is the difference on the 813, is it 813 more spots? Or, we had talked about this at legal and finance, but just so the public knows.
And, now, there, and, I'm not, let me try this from Marcia, and you can correct me if I get this wrong. In the Civic Center District, it's a little bit different as far as the rest of the city as far as determining the, determining the number of required parking spots. In the Civic Center District, it's actually written in our code that the city council shall determine the appropriate amount of parking. Now, having said that, based upon what would typically be required for a school, that would be 813 parking stalls. The Civic, Central High School, when completed, will actually have 1,103 parking stalls. So, they will far exceed the amount that we're actually proving here, but what we need to do is actually establish the base, and that's what is being asked to do here. Marcia, how did I do?
1,102.
Oh, darn, I was off one. Okay. Okay, so 1,102.
Okay, and then what we have now, the existing is, you said 1,102?
Yep. There is no net gain or net loss.
And there's no change at the Civic Center for helping out Central as well? That's, is actually the same?
No, those are all on the Central property.
And we're not gaining any more students at Central?
They've indicated they are not. And again, what you're reviewing today is for the theater expansion. This is the 36,000 square foot addition for the theater.
So, it's not really Central's expanding to add more students, they're expanding because they want to add more.
Programs.
Facilities.
Okay, thank you. That's all I need to know. I think the public needed to know some of that, too. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all's in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number 50, and Alderwoman Deb Haddock, could you please read that in?
Number 50 is acknowledged update regarding status of application fee refund to Melody Acre residence. And I move to acknowledge.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you. With the permission of the Chair, I would like to ask a question of Mr. Freitag.
Sure, go ahead, please.
Mr. Freitag, my question is for you, is are you aware if any of the Melody Acres residents have filed small claims actions against the city?
Mr. Freitag?
No, the ones that I did talk to are intimidated. They are not going to enter into any kind of a lawsuit with the city, even as minor as a small claims action. The thing I've always said, and I've said it in front of you before, if 100 people come up to second floor, 98 of them give up or give in.
Say, Bill?
And there's only two, that will be the.
Bill? Bill? No, no, you, Bill. Just procedurally, so everyone understands how this works, if there's a question asked during this part of the council meeting, it's important that the response is specifically to the question that's answered, and we typically don't allow latitude. We certainly want to make sure everyone has the opportunity, and that's why we do have the public comment periods earlier in that. So, with that, Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor.
Thank you. So, my proposal is this, and Mr. Freitag, I'm going to ask you this in just a moment. My, I think most of us are probably aware of how small claims actions work, and my understanding, and the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, if a small claims packet is filed and the defendant does not fight the small claims, and basically, you know, doesn't, you know, doesn't show up or doesn't enter counterarguments, then, then the small claims action would be completed, and then, in this case, the $250 payments could be issued, and this whole issue could be put to rest. So, my, so, my question is this, is can, can we ask the city attorney's office to draft a letter to each of the, I believe it's five people who had paid fees, and that letter would simply state, the city council has directed that we, that we send a letter to you stating that we will not fight or argue against a small claims action if you bring it forward against us regarding the Melody Acres fee. Can we do that and try to put this issue to rest?
I'm going to go to Jason Green, our city attorney. Do we have the authority to, do we have the ability to do that?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it would be appropriate to come from the city attorney's office, but if it came from the council, from the mayor, from somewhere else, yes, you have the authority to do that.
Okay. Alderman Quaker, you still have the floor, sir.
So, that would really be of the same effect because clearly the city attorney would not fight the action if the council was against, did not want the action to be defended. Is that correct? So, I'd like, I'd like to then offer a motion to ask that a letter be drafted to all the individuals affected by the Melody Acres fees that would simply state that the, that the City of Rapid City will not argue against a small claims action for refund of, of the fees and related costs relating to the application fees. That is my motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Haddock. Right, okay. Okay, very good. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to direct a question to Jason Green. If a letter like that were to be written, what does that do for our options legally? And I'm just wondering if, just based on precedent here, if we were to write a letter like that, is that a declaration of waiving rights or anything of the kind?
Let's go to Jason Green, our city attorney.
It would be a very unusual action for a public body to invite people to sue the public body. I don't think it would have much precedental value in other areas, but it's something that certainly people will point to in the future when they're dissatisfied with something that the council has done.
Okay.
Thank you. Just to ask another question for clarification here. Jason, is it possible that we could draft a letter in such a manner as to notify them of their legal rights, of pursuing legal courses of action, and possibly attaching these state attorney general's letter from Marty Jackley with the points of what he was directing of a possible remedy? Is that possible? And what would be your advice on that?
Mr. Green?
Well, it would be absolutely inappropriate for me to do that, for me to give legal advice to someone who is not my client and who actually is adverse to my client. I think it's unwise for the city council to undertake to give legal advice to anyone, so I wouldn't suggest that you do that, but that's up to you.
Okay. Let's go to, anything else, Mr. Mason?
No, thank you. I yield.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Haddock.
It's not what, like, I don't want to help these people, but I don't know if I want to encourage them to come against and us not do anything when people fight against us in the court of law. I think they've proven a point that Mr. Freitag has said, that they're not coming up because we're the city. So, I think the best way to do this, to fix the issue, is if we could basically change the process, create a refund in growth management, so when this comes up, or if we can create some kind of refund to give back money. Because when we make mistakes, we seem to find a way to give back that money and call it a mistake. But we cannot, by our own accord, find somewhere where we can do a refund for our mistakes. So, I would ask Jason, is there any way to create some kind of opportunity in our process for refund in growth management or any other management in our city in order to give a refund when city council makes mistakes?
Let's go to Jason Green. Do you understand the question? I think what she's referring to is what Mr. Freitag was suggesting is creating a policy within city code similar to what's already on the books in different situations.
I don't believe that there is a legal way to do it, and with regard to the item that Mr. Freitag pointed out, I think that's an inappropriate provision in the ordinance. I believe that there's a review underway for the adoption of a new building code at this point in time. That's the reason I haven't brought an ordinance forward to repeal that provision. I don't think it's worth the time. I don't believe that it's appropriate for the city council to adopt an ordinance that says everyone shall pay this fee upon the submission of an application unless the city council decides you don't have to pay it. I think that's pretty clearly runs afoul of the obligations of the council under state law.
Another question?
Go ahead, please.
So, but on process and procedure, we did not follow that, and the growth management was in agreement with that, as we were with the 19,000 where process and procedure wasn't followed, but we still gave back a refund. So, I'm not seeing the difference between a mistake in a council and a mistake in a staff member, and how we could call one different than the other, but be able to give the opportunity to give cash flow back, maybe because it was already given back in a sense, and now we're trying to ask for it back. But either way, a mistake was, was done, and money was given. So, I don't know. It just seems like in the process, it's not making sense to me how you could do one and not the other. So, there is no help for the common citizen, is what we're saying, through mistakes done by the council or something that our own omission that we say that we did not catch, Jason.
Is that a question?
Is that what you're saying?
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
I'm not sure what the question is.
I guess what I'm saying is the full council in agreement said that it was a mistake and we should give back their money. In that full agreement, there is no opportunity in our code, in our process, in which to give back constituents or people in our city money back for things that we are saying are our own mistakes.
Mr. Green?
There's no opportunity.
And just a reminder, the motion on the floor is to actually draft a letter. We're sort of getting off topic here a little bit, but I want to give Mr. Green an opportunity to respond to that.
The, the decision, if a public policymaking body, a legislative body, decides it has made a mistake in one of its legislative enactments, the only remedy that is available to it is to undo that legislation. That does not affect anyone who is adversely affected by the legislation during the time it exists. So, no, you can't give the money back when you decide that you don't like the ordinance that was passed and enforced. That's not a permissible way to spend the taxpayers' dollars.
Thank you.
I'm, sorry, Mayor, can I talk again? But we adversely affected them with our own decision, which we have made on something that was, in fact, an ordinance, in which we are saying that we adversely affected them, and we don't want to change the ordinance because we think it's a good ordinance, but what we did and what was omitted by the growth management is by our own ordinance enactment, these people did not need it. So, they adversely affected by how we did that on something that really wasn't needed, in something in an ordinance which we are enacting but not trying to change. Do you understand what I'm saying?
Okay. We're going to, we're going to try and reel this in. Keep, please keep in mind, the motion on the floor.
In other words, we're not going to change it.
Is to actually, to draft a letter to the affected property owners. Any further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor.
In other words, we're not gonna change it.
Is to actually, to draft a letter, uh, to the affected property owners. Any further discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Freitag, I have, uh, another question for you.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, and my, my question is this, is do you feel that the motion on the floor, if it passes, would be helpful to have this letter that could be submitted with the packet, um, the small claims packet, along with the attorney's, attorney general's, uh, opinion, which has been made public, and, and the other information? Or, or do you believe that, um, that, um, these residents won't do anything regardless? And if so, uh, why do you feel that way? And if not, why do you feel that way?
Mr. Freitag.
Um, Mr. Quaker, the, uh, what I believe about, um, what you said is this, that if you send a letter to these people, I believe it's gonna cost them about $29 or $30 to file, you tell them that they can collect their $29 or $30, they're not gonna be out of pocket any more money, that they should ask for their fees back, um, and you communicate to them that the council has, uh, said that the city will not resist their lawsuit, uh, and I agree with Mr., uh, Green, I hate to, but I agree with Mr. Green, he can't say, I mean, it's kind of a, really an unusual deal to say, "Listen, sue me and I'm not gonna show up." You can't, he can't do that. But you could say, as the council, like he suggested, so if you can communicate that to those people, and I'd never throw in the letter from the attorney general enough, I'd just keep it really simple, simple and sweet, tell them, "Get their 29 bucks back for filing, ask for their $250 back for the fee that they paid, expect that the city won't show up, and expect that the judge will award you the $250, and forthwith, the city will send you a check." And that would be super if that happened. And I believe they would respond to that, I really do, Sam.
Okay, thank you. Sam, anything else? Let's go to, I'm gonna go to a couple folks that have not had the opportunity to speak. Please keep in mind, the motion on the floor is whether or not to send a letter. We're not gonna open up the entire discussion again that we've, I think we've spent probably about 30 hours on. So, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, uh, though I don't think it's good practice, I'm comfortable with the letter if it gets these people their money back. Um, I'm not gonna reiterate myself time after time, uh, to, to say how ridiculous I think this whole thing was, any more than that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, my question is for Jason Green, if I may.
Go ahead, please.
Uh, Jason, when a small claims, uh, grievance, uh, when a claim is filed against the city, do we receive notification of that claim?
Jason?
Yes, the city will receive notification.
Okay, and the dollar amount is included in that claim?
Yes.
Is there a possibility that at the hearing, if the city did not show up, that, uh, the person making the claim could ask for more money, and the judge would grant that?
Mr. Green?
I think that's unlikely, but it is a normal possibility.
Cause that'd be one concern. Um, I hate to tempt good people. Um, well, would there be any recourse if one of those fine people ended up, uh, asking for more money than they paid to the city plus court costs?
Let's go to Mr. Green.
No, one of the, one of the features of small claim court is that that decision is final, there is no appeal.
Mm-hmm. Well, from that case, it'd be difficult for me to approve of sending a letter and not s- saying, saying that the city's not gonna represent itself. Um, Jason, would the possibility exist, if I may, Mr. Mayor, um, Jason, would the possibility exist to simply have a city attorney on hand during these hearings in case something like that came up?
Mr. Green?
Yes, that would be a possibility.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm absolutely appalled that we spent the last 30 minutes discussing ways to figure out a way to screw the system. I hope that none of my wife's fourth grade students are watching this tonight, because I think this is probably the worst example of civic duty that we've shown from this dais in a long time. I am totally in agreement that we need to re, find a way to return the $1,000, but this end run that we're trying to pull off tonight absolutely stinks. And I'm not afraid to say it right here, and I think we, as a group, should look in the mirror. I, I, that's all we're doing, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm ashamed of us. And I think this is, this discussion should stop right now, and the vote should be that we are not going to look for ways to bring upon ourselves an action that we know is wrong, just so that we can get this off of our chest. I, I, we've got a mistake, we know that. We need to find a legal way to fix it, but continuing to create another way, and, and, I mean, it's like teaching a little kid you not get in the cookie jar, but if nobody catches you, it's okay. I, I'm, I don't believe that's the, the lesson I wanna teach, and that's not why I am here. I yield.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Green, um, we, back in legal and finance, a month or two ago, when this topic first came up, um, but I thought it was my understanding that once a, uh, a small claims was filed against the city, then at that time, we would have discretion to give the refund, that they wouldn't actually have to go through the whole process.
Let's go to Mr. Green. We have to get a, there has to be a judgment.
Well, there would have to be, there, there's two ways it could end. The city could settle it, assuming that you could make an offer that would be acceptable to the person filing the lawsuit, or there would have to be a judgment and that would have to be paid. So, there's two ways that it could end.
Okay, so, in simple terms, then, if they go small claims and request their refund plus their, uh, court cost, then we could turn around then and give them their money?
Mr. Green?
Without them having to actually go to small claims court? I mean, they have to file, but not actually have the hearing with the judge?
Mr. Green?
Yes, they would have to file, and after it's filed, the city council would have the authority to settle the claim against the city.
Okay, cause I think that would be obviously the best way to go, and that way you wouldn't have to worry about money. Um, I agree with, um, Alderman Davis about how silly this all is, and how it shows sometimes the ineffectiveness of government, um, but I think everyone up here agrees that people should get their money back. I believe, Jason, you've been beat up as many times as we possibly could trying to get you to change your opinion, and even the state attorney said the only way that they could get, legally get their money back is by, uh, suing. So, I don't see it as exactly like Mr. Davis does. I think it's ridiculous, but I do think it's, the legal way for them to get their money back is to, to sue the city. And so, I'm in support of sending a letter and asking them, and even, um, to do it. And like I've also offered before, is I'll be more than willing to put in $100 of cash for my, uh, if the whole city council wants to pitch in. And, uh, anyway, I'm in support of the motion.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be brief. I just wanted to recap, uh, two things. I, I absolutely agree with, uh, Alderman Davis's point that, uh, this, uh, what we're actually asking to resolve this, um, I think I've stated very explicitly that I am very concerned about that sort of precedent. It does not mean that I do not want the right thing to be done. I think, uh, our state attorney general made it very clear how this can be resolved. My concern is, is that, uh, if we go down this road, we are opening a door to a long-term form of doing business, and I couldn't agree more with Alderman Davis that this is not the way to do it. Um, and, and in light of that, I would also like to touch upon what, uh, city attorney Jason Green pointed out of referencing or alluding to, and correct me if I'm wrong, but post ex facto law, that even if we do change the ordinance at this point, we cannot go back in time and apply a new ordinance retroactively. We do not have that authority, nor should we. Um, but I would like to make a substitute motion in light of those comments, in replace of Alderman Quaker, to take the recommendations of looking at applying a new ordinance and open that discussion to the legal and finance at that point, and that is all.
Okay. We have a substitute motion? Do we have a second? Okay, we have a, a substitute motion and a second, then, and that is to ask, uh, Jason Green to bring back to legal and finance any opportunities to actually change our city ordinances that would allow for a refund in similar situations. Is that correct? I just wanna make sure-
That is correct, yes.
That's intended of your motion. Okay, discussion on that motion, and we're gonna talk just about that motion. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. You did give me that leeway earlier, and I guess that's what I was talking about. And Jason, I think reiterated then, again, that you couldn't change it by state statute. So, I second it just for discussion, but, um, going back on the same road we were before, um, he said we couldn't do it. So, it would be irrelevant on this motion as well, unless we're looking for the same result as the last motion of not getting anywhere, uh, with this motion as we did the last, unless somebody can bring forth something at this point. Jason, uh, do you have any discussion on this motion as we did, uh, just a little bit ago, uh, have this discussion?
Mr. Green, do you understand the question?
I believe I do.
In other words, can you find a solution to actually allow for refunds in similar situations?
I can find, I can draft an ordinance that will outline when it is permissible to refund money paid to the city, but it's not gonna help the Melody Acres situation.
So, Jason, sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead, please.
So, that would help the people in the future if we wanted to give a refund? Is that what you're saying?
Mr. Green?
If there were people that were identically situated to the Melody Acres citizens in the future, the ordinance that I have in mind would not help them, no.
If they're the same as Melody Acres, they won't be the same, or they won't be able to get their money back just the same way. So, this motion, um, again, would be just as lacking as the last. So, I guess the main thing is to acknowledge your report and move on, cause at this point, um, there's no solution unless somebody, um, can find how to change, uh, state statute.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That was going to be my point exactly, is that, uh, we've had the dog chasing the tail. We came up with a solution, uh, the, the motion has been substituted now. I was willing to vote on the previous motion and move this thing along. Maybe not the most perfect solution, uh, but it is a solution for, uh, a minority of people who are unable to defend themselves in a manner against Goliath. Put it in the way that if you are a large person and you can beat up a small person, is it right to do it? Absolutely not, it's not right to do it. Uh, there is a reason that those people are unwilling to come forward, and anybody who would try to hide the fact that, uh, arguing with city hall would today find themselves prudent to watch this discussion and see why they wouldn't even wanna take the challenge upon themselves. So, I think that, uh, I would, I would definitely support the previous motion, uh, not whether it was, uh, legal or not. I'm, I'm, I'm okay with it, because I've seen plenty of refunds opt out of this city. I've seen plenty of errors made, as I would say, but an error is made, nobody's held accountable, not in the three years I've been here. But if you're a citizen of our community, you're held accountable, not an employee. I have yet to see one of them be held accountable yet. So, for me, this decision's simple, maybe not the best, maybe not legal, but it's the right one. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go back to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to actually, uh, respond to some of the comments made and also defend my reasoning on why I brought the substitute motion forward. Uh, one of the things that was actually mentioned and, uh, into the growth management review was the possibility of an appeals board, which would allow for a form of due process, and it specifically references the city council as a quasi-judicial body. Um, I guess what I was looking at is the possibility of if there was a form of due process to review certain circumstances, such as the Melody Acres, if that sort of legal remedy, uh, could be applied in an ordinance through, uh, through our current city ordinances and code. Um, and I guess I would at least like to look at the possibility. Um, I, I understand where a lot of people are at, that we have been over this issue repeatedly, but I guess I am afraid, and very tenuous, of trying to do something good, but paving the road to hell in the process. The old saying is, is the road to hell is paved with good intentions, and we have good intentions here today, but it may lead us to a very bad place. And I, I am very tenuous and cautious of going down that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? I see no, no lights. Uh, I'm just gonna add my very quick two cents worth, and, and that is the fact that if nothing else, by allowing the city attorney to actually look at, uh, bringing back some, uh, changes to city ordinance, if nothing else, it may not help in future situations like Melody Acres, but in my mind, what it will do is actually help clarify when and for what reasons we can actually issue those refunds, and it will be spelled out very clearly in ordinance. So, I think there is some benefit of going through the exercise. With that, seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of the substitute motion? Okay, I'm, let, let me repeat, uh, and Bonnie, we'll come to you in just a second. There again, typically, uh, what we, what we do is, once we start the cadence, if I don't see a light, I start the cadence. I typically don't take lights, because then people keep trying to do it at the very last second. But Bonnie, let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Sorry. Um, the substitute motion then is to just have Jason look back, so we're just like gonna not do anything about drafting the letter, because-
That is correct.
I think the issue here is what we're gonna do specifically for Melody Acres, get them going, or can we combine the two? That's my-
Okay.
I hate to see us have to come back and redo Melody Acres again. I'd like for us to get them going, so, so the motion now excludes the other.
Motion on the floor, the substitute motion replaces the original motion. So, the only thing on the table right now is to direct Jason Green to come back with proposed, uh, changes in city ordinance to clearly spell out when, under what circumstances, refunds can be issued. Okay, everyone clear on that? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Uh, let's do a quick roll call, please.
Wa? Brown? Mason? Peterson? Wyffenbach? Davis? Hadcock? Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes on an eight to two vote, correct? Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Let's see, Alderwoman, Alderwoman Hadcock, could you please read in item number 51, please?
One is approval of recommendation of a 3-1-1 service with the funding coming from council contingency, and I think, um, I'm the one that put this on here, just to rephrase it, um-
2-1-1.
To, to the 2-1-1, if we could, Mayor.
Very good. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge the discussion on change policy, um, this, uh, on approving a recommendation, we're gonna call it 2-1-1 at this point, uh, in that the funding come from council contingency. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I supported the 2-1-1, and I support this, but I don't support, uh, not budgeting this item, just calling it a council contingency item. I, I prefer that we directed, uh, the administration to find, uh, a cost-saving mechanism to then, uh, apply this to the budget, so.
Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I started thinking about Alderman Wyffenbach's comments, and I think I lost my train of thought. Can I yield without losing my two chances to speak?
Sure. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Um, just wanted to acknowledge, um, Mr. Jordan Mason on this, uh, project. He's been working on this for a few months. He is a new council member, and again, we had said this at legal and finance, but it's nice to say it for, uh, the public. A new council member, um, worked very hard to get this through with Kevin Tome, um, did a great job, and it's gonna be, uh, extra service for our citizen, and are very positive. So, thank you, Jordan Mason, and your hard work, and, uh, new council member bringing something forward, uh, this specific is, is really great. So, thank you, Jordan Mason.
Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is to approve the recommendation for the 2-1-1 service with the funding to come from council contingency. Seeing no further lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number, Deb, could you please read in item number 53, please?
I was sucking up to the new council member, Dave Davis.
Okay.
Sorry. We're on 52.
53.
53. Acknowledged report on city cell phones. And acknowledged the report.
We have a motion, second to acknowledge, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to item number 62, please. Deb, if you could please read that in.
62 is to authorize mayor and finance officer to sign loan documents with Pioneer Bank and Trust to refinance a Meadowbrook Kart Barn loan currently held with P A J O Properties LLC in the approximate amount of $119,000. And a move of approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. We're dealing with item number 62, which is authorize mayor and the finance officer to sign loan documents with Pioneer Bank and Trust to refi, uh, to refinance the Meadowbrook Kart Barn for the total dollar amount of $119,000. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. The reason I want to bring this up, to discuss it, is I am just curious as to the reason why we're refinancing at this time and what the reasoning for that is. And I'd like to direct that question to our finance officer, assumption.
Let's go to Pauline, who's going to tell us we can save a bunch of money.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our current loan with Pedro Properties actually goes through 2019, and we are paying 10% interest, which is very high in this economy. We are refinancing with Pioneer Bank for four and a quarter percent on that loan, I believe, and then it will be paid off in 2017.
Okay.
Thank you, and I just also wanted to commend you on that effort of dropping it down to 4.75%. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
I appreciate that work you've done on there, Ms. Pauline, also that you are looking into other areas that you can move this interest rate down for us, for the city and the constituents. So thank you for your good work, Ms. Pauline, and that you are catching these and making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, item number 62. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Alderwoman Hattcock, could you please read in item number 65, please? Item number 65.
Thank you, Mayor. Sixty-five is authorize mayor and finance officer to sign contract for fiscal year 2010, Community Development Block Grant Subrecipient, Rapid City First Methodist, United Methodist Church, as well as the indenture of restrictive covenants, and I move approval.
We have a motion, second for approval, discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Bill Wa.
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like the record to show I will be abstaining on item number 65, as I'm an employee of the Rapid City First United Methodist Church. Thank you.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion? Motion is for approval, item number 65. Seeing no lights, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, with Alderman Bill Wa abstaining. Thank you, everyone. That does take us to the end of the consent calendar, and that is through items number 85. And so we're on to the non-consent items. These are items number 86 through 119, 86 through 119. Chair will look for motion to open the public comment periods in items 86 through 119 inclusive. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We have one speaker request forum, this is Mr. Terry Olson, item 101, everyone, 101. Mr. Olson, you go ahead and identify yourself for the record, and then you'll have your three minutes. Just watch the lights.
Certainly, Terry Olson, I'm the lease manager for Lamar Advertising here in Rapid City. And again, second verse, same as the first, we handle the whole state of South Dakota and southwest Minnesota. I handle the whole state of South Dakota, there's no other sign ordinance in the state of South Dakota as restrictive as here in Rapid City. The ordinance is working. There hasn't been a new billboard built in Rapid City since 2002. Lamar has taken on responsibility and reduced a number of billboards, or reduced our signboard presence in the city Rapid City by 30,000 square feet alone. This is under operating on the current ordinance. It's equivalent of removing 47 14 by 48 billboards in the city. We ask if the sign, so if we ask if the sign code task force has started, that the moratorium be on the new builds requiring signed credits only. We at Lamar have buttoned down the hatches the last two years for the economy, the money's starting to loosen up, and we want to continue our remodeling project and some of our billboards, reducing the size, upgrading them, doing some pain, and so on and so forth. So we would ask that the moratorium not be put on. If it would be put on, we would ask that it be put on new builds requiring signed credits, or if that's not possible, make a blanket moratorium, put it on and off-premise, but on-premise. By no means am I throwing the on-premise sign people under the bus, but what's fair is fair. Some of the arguments are, one of the arguments is, is that there'd be a rush to put in sign applications to beat the moratorium. However, you know, we've known about the sign code task force for a number of months, and we've only put in one sign application at a time, and that was because the money has loosened up and we're beginning to do some more building. Lamar has always abided by the code, we will continue to abide by the code, even when the last sign code task force was put into effect, even though we vehemently opposed us not being on it, we were not asked to be on it, however, we agreed to it. So we just ask that if the sign code task force would be put in effect, that we as Lamar would be on it, and number two, the moratorium would not be on any billboards, any remodeling billboards, only new billboards requiring signed credits. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Olson. I have no further speaker request forums on items 86 through 119. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak? Now, the chair will look for a motion to close public comment period on items 86 through 119.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. We do need to approve the consent calendar, these are items 77 through 85. Chair would look to staff to see if we need to pull any of these continued items, 77 through 85 inclusive. Marcia, Robert? Okay, how about from the council? If not, the chair would look for a motion to approve the continued consent items, item 77 through 85 inclusive, per the recommendation on the published agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. That does take us to the non-consent items, items 86 through 119, and we're on to item number 86. And Deb, would you please read in item number 86, please?
Eighty-six is the first reading ordinance, 5637, an ordinance regarding supplemental appropriation number four for 2010, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 87, please.
Eighty-seven is first reading ordinance number 5661, an ordinance, annual appropriation ordinance of FY 2011, and this would be the budget, and I yield the floor.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. This is first reading only of ordinance 5661, which is the appropriation ordinance for 2011. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the words of a councilman that I've been reiterated in my head over and over, and I'm in the sake of redundancy, I'm going to repeat it. This process so far, to me, has been adding shingles to the old farmhouse. I voted against it at the legal finance, and I am going to vote against it tonight. I don't clearly understand the direction that we've taken on this budget. I clearly don't understand putting off purchases but yet leasing out those same options. There was requests at the budget meetings when we originally started them back in August, we'd received those late Friday night, I haven't had a chance to review them. I understand this is first reading, but I also understand how that works. We as the council are challenged, as the mayor mentioned earlier, with one of the most important factors of the city. Zero growth to me is meaningless. Starting from zero means something to me. Zero growth means you're just doing the same old thing that you've done time after time after time. I brought mention to that earlier in the legal finance committee, and I'll reiterate it tonight. I think it's an opportune time to look at this. Our numbers are down for the past two years. There needs to be some specific adjustments made. We've got subsidies that are non-sunsetting, they continue to grow, they continue to be the same year after year after year, even though at some point we should look at saying these items don't make any sense anymore, it's time to cut them off from appropriations, and either they stand on their own two feet or they fail. There's items there that we need to look at. It is the council's challenge here tonight. Yeah, they can go ahead and we can just take this as, yeah, this is just a first reading, and move forward, or we can take this as, in Pelosi's words, let's pass it and then find out what's in it later. So if you vote yes for this tonight, expect a phone call from me, and I will ask you what you just voted on, what the items were in that budget that you voted on, and I'll expect you to answer, because obviously you know better than I do. So I appreciate the time. That is my response tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Thank you, Mayor. I yielded the floor because at this point, on first reading, I still don't think there was enough discussion on the first reading before we moved it forward this time. I still think on second floor, there can be some changes made for some spending, on cuts in spending. I think there can be, I know we have a community resource director that if it works out for him, will move to sheriff, which I'm pretty sure that's going to happen. Maybe there could be a cut in the community resource director. That might be some cost savings. Subsidy cuts, that's 5%. Someone said that isn't very much, but if you add some of these totals together, they add up to some spending cuts. Sometimes people say we shouldn't do capital costs, we should not do people, we should do capital costs, but I think there's a balance. In order to balance a business or a budget, there has to be both, otherwise in the end, you're going to have some huge capital costs that are going to come to fruition. So some of this, I think we didn't have enough discussion on it. We can still have more discussion on Monday, but I'm not going to pass a first reading guessing that some of this stuff, I think, can be made changes. If the mayor gave us this budget, that doesn't mean 10 council members have to approve it. We can make those changes and do those spending cuts ourselves and make that difference. He showed us one of the things we could do, and that's okay. Now, we can do the hard work here as council members, roll up your sleeves on this first reading, not approve it, and move it forward on some spending cuts, not savings, but spending cuts, because that's how you're going to make this budget work. Because zero growth doesn't work. It has shown last year, it doesn't work. Because what happens is you have supplemental appropriations, or they're called what I call change orders, and by the end, you have the same thing on anything else. You have a budget that's been overbudgeted, the savings weren't really savings in the end. They were change orders or supplemental appropriations. So call it what you want, but do some of this work ahead of time, do those spending cuts, do what you need to do. Don't be politically correct and just agree on something, but go in there, roll up your sleeves and find something, because there is stuff in our budget that we can cut on spending cuts, and that's the biggest issue. We heard it today. It was one of the things that Mr. Thune was talking about, he wanted to do federally. I think we need to start at the lower level and show people how it's done. I don't think it's that hard. Spending cuts are not as hard as we make them, we just make them politically correct so we can't. So I won't be approving this budget as well, this reading. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. In addition to some of the comments that have already been made, I am also leaning towards not voting for this first reading for several reasons. The first and foremost, as I have asked many of the council members, including the mayor, some clarification on some issues. One in particular is, a while ago, I sent out an email where I asked and pointed out that while it is absolutely true that we have a 5.6% decrease in our general fund, we have a grand total of a 14.8% increase in our enterprise funds, which additionally accounts for about $15 million being added to our budget, and I guess I would like a little more clarification on where that money is actually going. And in some of those conversations, the explanations that I've heard are a little, I guess, in my perspective, they are not substantial to answer that question, given the timeframe of when the budget was drafted and when certain projects were actually approved. The other area that I guess I'm concerned about is that if we do approve the first reading, that we will approve the second without notice, and that is just to say that I could see this being slipped by very quickly. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval. I'm going to point out just a couple obvious facts and the fact that the comment that was made that this is not a no-growth budget, that is true, it's not. The budget I proposed actually has a reduction in general fund money of 5.2%, which is $2,585,000. So, you know, we have gone through, with the help of the department heads and other city employees, we've gone through and made reductions to the general fund budget, which is a tax-supported budget. So the statement is correct. This isn't a no-growth budget, this is actually a cut budget, it's a reduced budget, and the reason we did that was because of the fact that we do not want to find ourselves in a situation where we over-project revenue and overspend. We will, I will not allow that to happen. With that, keep in mind is the fact that there is notification requirements. Matter of fact, the second reading will, has to be done by the first of October, is that correct, Mr. Green? This is nothing unique. Quite honestly, in the six years I was on the council, we always typically had, we approved first reading and basically had plenty of long spirited debates as far as what else we should do to the budget, and I expect this council to have no less of a spirited discussion come next Monday night. Absolutely, is there an opportunity? And I think Alderwoman Hattcock hit it right on the head, is the fact that even though I proposed the budget, that's one of my responsibilities, it is also responsibility of the council to take a look at that budget and see if they want to make any changes. That is absolutely within their prerogative to do, and I would encourage them to take a look at any and all opportunities. I don't have so much pride and ownership here where I'm certainly, if there's some good ideas where we can get some additional savings, I'm all for that. So with that, thank you for the discussion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Kroger.
Turn your mic on.
I guess on one hand, I'm a little disappointed in some of the comments that come forward tonight, because we have had two evenings of budget discussions, and we did have a discussion between all the council members about when we would have our next budget hearing. And, you know, we set some times, and oh gee, that ain't going to work for me, I'm not going to be in town, and yada, yada, yada. So all of a sudden, we finally come to an agreement as the group that we would schedule our next budget hearings on the 13th. That seemed to work for everyone. We all knew at that point in time, we had not rolled up our sleeves and done any work, but we all agreed, at least it was my thought, that we would move forward, have our hearings on the 13th, do whatever we had to do to get ready in preparation to approve the budget before the end of the month. So, you know, I'm certainly willing to roll up my sleeves and do that work, but what that's going to end up doing is if we don't approve first reading tonight, it really does put us on a timeframe, a short timeframe, it could. So if we're all willing to roll up our sleeves and really get to work on this budget, I have no problems with that. But when we set a schedule of when the next budget hearing is going to be to do that, I don't want to hear, gee, that ain't going to work for me. So if you don't want to approve first reading tonight, then I would hope that after the 13th, and we schedule a meeting, no matter what the day is, that that'll work for you, because you're putting us in the timeframe that we're in this evening. The last comment I'd have to make, or a question I would have, is, Mayor, you just said we had to have this budget approved by the first of October. What's the penalty if we do not have the budget approved by the first of October?
We cannot certify our needs to the county, and we potentially could lose about $20 million of the property tax revenue.
Thank you, Mayor.
Twelve, I'm sorry, 12 million.
12 million? So if you want to roll up your sleeves, let's roll up our sleeves. So let's get it done, and let's not hear, well, gee, that ain't going to work for me for a budget hearing night. So that's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
I guess on that, I would like to verify that we would lose 12 million if we potentially didn't get it done by October 1st.
Let's go to Jason Green, city attorney.
It is a requirement of state law for the municipal governing body to certify the amount that it wishes to have levied prior to October 1st. That can't be done until the budget ordinance is passed. If you don't have a budget ordinance passed by October, or by September 30th, you will lose all of the property tax, which I believe is 12 million dollars.
So you're saying we can't levy, meaning we can't put the 12 million up until it, I mean, putting a certain amount up to make sure it goes through at October 1st without approving the whole budget? Can you approve partial budget at that time to make sure you get the property tax?
No, I don't believe that's an option.
Okay. I guess I was listening to Thune today and hearing that they don't, they haven't approved the budget for four years federally on time, and there were some issues, but I guess we're different than the feds. Imagine that. The other comment was moving forward and preparation and time and different things and timeframes, I understand that, but some of us, we don't miss many meetings, and if we are at this time, there's legitimate reason for missing those meetings. I basically do make almost every meeting except for this last month or so. I am concerned on some
I am concerned on some of this spending, just looking at how we've done it in the past and how we just approve first reading and move to the second, and then we move it along as fast as we can to get it through. I'm okay with more questions to this budget. I'm not offended by if we have to do first reading one week and then have to have a special council meeting like we've had in the past to move it again for the second week. I'm not offended by that, because partly, it's to get it where we need it to be in the end and have all the questions. Even if there's no changes in the end, and we have all that discussion, and people are comfortable with it, we're the ones that have to go back to the constituents, or the city people, and tell them why we did it. We can't guess. So, if I can say I've done everything and looked at everything, that maybe I can cut on the spending side and say I've done that, that's where I'm going. If we need to do that in a slower pace, and people say that we could do this a little bit different, just go ahead and approve it, I'm not willing to approve something that I'm not understanding the whole fully potential reason why we're doing it. I'm with Mr. Wyffenbach on where we're going with it. Again, I'd rather do the cuts before first reading and then go through and go to second reading, and hurry the second reading through and not the first. It's easier to, for me, to approve it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline, did you have discussion?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I just wanted to clarify that the actual dollar amount in the budget ordinance for property taxes that we could potentially lose is 12,758,891.
Very good. Thank you. Go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I find it precarious that you're going to, or I shouldn't say you, Mr. Mayor, because this administration would say to the council, you know, you got till October 1 to approve this budget. We had an entire year. On Friday, at 3:44 in the afternoon, I got an email with the questions that we asked at the budget hearings. Now, I'm coming here tonight, and I'm supposed to be expected to just have all that information available to me and make it, make this first reading happen tonight. And when you say, when we get down to a crunch time, it's everybody. We have an entire year. We could start today on the following year's budget if we prefer. I mean, so, making a gesture that we're going to lose 12 million dollars if we don't approve this by October 1st is just, it almost reminds me of the Melody Acres type of situation. This is getting out of hand and out of control. I surely would appreciate if my council people would fill me in, and I'll take the next 30 minutes here, because if they're ready to vote, and they know all the answers, and they can understand that email that they got at 3:45 on Friday afternoon today, then fine, let's vote on it. Let's move forward with it. But don't come and say to us, you have this particular time where you're going to lose all this money. It's like a scare tactic, that the same reason that the smaller people out there won't deal with City Hall. I'm not going to be frightened or intimidated by it. If it comes October 1st, or the day before of September 29th at 12:00 AM or 11:59 AM, and we pass this, God bless us, to get it right. I mean, we had all year to get the information. We got some of it from the discussions at 3:45 on Friday afternoon. I think a lot of us were gone for the three-day weekend. I mean, that's appropriate. I mean, so let's don't talk about crunching timeframes here. Let's be legitimate and not try to scare each other into a situation. If people want to vote on it and they understand it, I'm fine with that. Well, I think it's time we look at cutting spending. No more adding shingles to the old farmhouse. And if we got to work three or four nights in a row after 5:00 or 6:00 o'clock, because most of us have full-time jobs, I mean, if I was a full-time administrator, I'd have this thing, I'd have plenty of time to digest this whole thing, no doubt about it, but I'm not. And in light of all the errors that have taken place and those types of things, it makes me a bit, a little bit leery to approve those types of things. And I just, I feel a little bit abraced by being accused of having no funding on October 1st and the threat of losing 12 million dollars. That's ridiculous. That's a comment that, that I think that's a, that could be used in a schoolyard argument. Let's have legitimate arguments up here, guys. Thank you.
Thank you. There again, just a point of clarification. That was a question that was asked, actually asked of staff, that was not brought forward by the staff or myself. That was a specific question, was actually asked of staff, what would happen if we do not approve it by October 1st? So, just for that clarification. Let's go to Alderman, Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. A lot of things to make comments on here. Starting with Alderman Wyffenbach's comment about how we've had this whole year to do the budget, that was recommended by Malcolm Chapman at the end of last year's budget session, and that got zero traction amongst us as council members. So, maybe we can learn a lesson next year and really dig our heels in, roll our, not dig our heels in, roll our sleeves up, and get involved with the budget process early so we don't have to deal with this sophomoric tendency to put in all this time last minute. And I tried to get all that out of my, my brain in college. Don't be a procrastinator anymore. But to echo Ron Kroger's comments, this is one of the most frustrating aspects of being on council leadership this year, has been trying to schedule people. No one, these are, we get paid to sit up here, we get paid to do the research, but when it comes time to sacrifice our time, it seems that we're all very, that's all very valuable to us. And you could say, oh, well, right now, Aaron doesn't have a job, but I'll remind you, I had a job for the first, you know, over a year that I was involved here. My second comment here is more of a clarification from Alderman Mason. Alderman Mason, if you would indulge.
Go ahead. Please ask your question.
You recommend, you said you had a concern about the second reading being slipped by. Would you mind explaining that a bit more to me about what the concern is there?
Mr. Mason, would you like to answer the question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor.
Very good.
Absolutely, and I think Mr. Wyffenbach and Alderwoman Hattcock both referenced my concern, and that is, is that as we approach October 1st, there will be more and more pressure to just approve and go on. And I would also say that I may have misspoken in using the word slipped by, but I would say that there is an immense amount of added pressure as time gets closer. And I would rather look at getting some of the information brought forward now rather than later, to actually touch upon your idea of procrastination. I don't think that's a good policy in how to do things, and that's exactly what I'm trying to prevent.
Well, thanks for that clarification. That comforts me greatly, because it'd be very difficult to slip something by us when we have to make the final vote. But I fully understand where you're coming from, the pressure standpoint. So, to echo Council President Kroger's comments, when it comes time to do the meetings over the next four weeks, to really hammer this out in a way that we're happy with, that we can be proud of, let's be ready to make sacrifices. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? See no further lights. Motion on the floor is for approval, first reading of ordinance 5661. See no further lights. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
Wa?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mason?
No.
Peterson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Davis?
Aye.
Hattcock?
Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
Motion passes on a 6 to 4 vote, is that correct?
Right.
Very good. And there again, everyone, keep in mind that this will be back in front of the city council at possibly our next city council meeting, and we may have to have a special council meeting if the council needs additional time. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. We're on to item number 88. Deb, if you would, please.
88 is first reading ordinance number 5662, an ordinance to allow the Rapid City Common Council to hear appeals from the International Building Code Board of Appeals by amending section 15.12.310 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move denial.
We have a motion and second for denial. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 89, please.
89 is first reading of ordinance number 5663, an ordinance to allow the Rapid City Common Council to hear appeals from the International Residential Code Board of Appeals by amending section 15.12.310 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move denial.
We have a motion and second for denial. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
I think I understand why these are all being denied, but I think it's important to just very briefly explain from the committee's perspective why these are being denied.
Did you want to direct that to anybody specific, or just put it out there?
Either Marsha Elkins or someone from Lehighman Finance.
Okay. Anyone like to chime in as far as a discussion at the committee?
I can do it.
Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Basically, we found that there's already, it was well taken care of in that it didn't need to come to the council for appeals. We are trying to make that process in the end through the Lahey report and other things that we have done, so council doesn't have to make this political issue, and that it would be more positive to leave it where it's at. Mr. Quaker.
Okay, thank you. Motion on the floor, dealing with item number 89. Correct? 89. Motion on the floor is for denial. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 90, please.
Number 90 is first reading of ordinance number 5664, an ordinance to allow the Rapid City Common Council to hear appeals from the International Property Maintenance Code Board of Appeals by amending section 15.12.310 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move denial.
We have a motion and second to deny. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 91.
91 is first reading of ordinance number 5665, an ordinance to allow the Rapid City Common Council to hear appeals of the International Existing Building Code Board of Appeals by amending section 15.12.310 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move denial.
We have a motion and second for denial. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 92, please.
92 is first reading of ordinance number 5666, an ordinance to remove the permit exemption for replacement of like-roofing materials by amending section 15.13030 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
My concern on 92 is to just make sure we're not changing our process to make it harder for constituents to come through and do roofing without having to have a roofer, a legal roofer, or permitted roofer, however you want to say that, to do their roofing when in the past, if I'm correct. Could they do it themselves by chance?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. As it stands today, a homeowner can re-roof their own home without the necessity of obtaining a residential contractor's license. That will continue to be true even after this amendment is in place. They'll just need to come down and get the building permit.
Thank you, Jason. That's what I needed clarification on. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want some clarification on this, especially in light of a recent issue we had dealing with a roofing issue, and I was just wondering if this would have, allowing this permit exemption for replacement of like-roofing materials, would that have affected the prior application that came forward?
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. The wording on the title of the ordinance is a bit confusing. What you're doing here is you're requiring a permit for someone to redo the roof. If that would have been in effect at the time this came up with the most recent issue, I think it's likely the individual or the contractor would have known they needed the permit, they would have come down, they would have found out that the method that they proposed at that time was not going to be acceptable, and that whole situation could have been avoided. So, I think the answer is yes.
Thank you for that clarification, Mr. Green.
Okay, very good. Any further discussion? Motion, we're dealing with item number 92. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number 93, please.
93 is first reading of ordinance number 5667, an ordinance to provide standard methods to adjust sewer bills based on usage of amending section 13.08.370C of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and second for approval. We're dealing with item number 93, which is first reading of ordinance 5669. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this is the issue that comes up with the snowbird, the snowbirds. So, I'd like to thank the Public Works Department for taking this seriously, because previously they were, they were told to basically leave their water running for a period of time so that their, their water bill would be a certain amount, so they would, their sewer bill wouldn't go up. So, this will eliminate that problem. Thank you.
Further discussion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker. Oh, you're good to go. Very good. And Robert, thank you. There again, this is one of the biggest complaints we got, is basically the, this is a seven-unit rule issue, correct? Yeah. This will solve a lot of problems for those folks that head south for the winter. Okay, a motion on the floor is for approval, first reading ordinance number 5667. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 9, item number 94, please.
94 is the second reading ordinance of 5639, an ordinance to add streets as a permissible expenditure from the Utilities Support Fund by amending section 3.10.060 of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval, dealing with item number 94. This is the second reading of ordinance number 5639. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman, Sam Quaker.
I believe the ordinance is fairly clear on this, but I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page, that this means that it can be used for rehab and repairs.
That is correct. I want to look at Jason Green, but I-
And so it can be used, it can be used for chip and seal and milling overlays and that sort of thing. Very good. Thank you.
Very good. Jason, you're shaking your head yes. That's the intent, I just want to make sure that's what the language reflects. I'm letting him read. We need to get this one right. Mr. Green?
The language says, shall be used for the construction operating, operation and maintenance of the city's utility facilities and streets. I believe maintenance would clearly encompass the items that Alderman Quaker requested.
Okay, very good. Alderman Quaker, anything else?
Since often means that you're, especially in the case of ADA improvements, means that you need to, that triggers sidewalk repairs as well, especially if you're at an intersection. Can we add and related expense or, and sidewalks? You know where I'm going with this? Because if we have, if we have a repair that's triggered at an intersection and that automatically requires ADA improvements to be made, I don't want the whole project to be delayed because we can't use these funds to put in curb ramps.
Yep. Jason?
I think that what you're getting at is that when those reconstructions happen, we've got to bring everything up to ADA requirements. I think that's a project cost of the street project itself, just like it would be if we needed to acquire additional right-of-way or temporary easements to get the project done. So, I don't think any amendment's necessary. I think that would be included within the scope of a streets project to do all of the things that are necessary to complete the project, including the ADA improvements.
You don't see any to add and sidewalks in here? Okay, thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item number ninety-five, please.
Ninety-five is second reading ordinance number fifty-six forty, an ordinance to add information technology infrastructure as a permissible use of the capital improvement funds by amending subsection three point one-six point zero-six-zero-D of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion dealing with item number ninety-five, which is second reading of ordinance number fifty-six forty? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number ninety-six, please.
Ninety-six is second reading of ordinance number fifty-six thirty-eight, an ordinance, amending the criteria of microcell wireless communications facilities allowed on top of existing buildings and allowing variances through the zoning board of adjustment by amending section seventeen point five zero point four zero zero-A of the Rapid City Municipal Code, and I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Alderman, Alderman Quaker does need to abstain because I believe this is related to his employment. So we'll make sure the record reflects it. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes with Alderman Quaker abstaining. Thank you, everyone. We're on to item number ninety-seven. Go ahead, please. Sam?
Ninety-seven is a request by Spurlock Consulting, Inc. for central resources for preliminary plat in the Menards Sum Division located at the current eastern terminus of East Anamosa Street. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations, and that is my motion.
We have a motion and second for approval with stipulations dealing with item number ninety-seven. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number ninety-eight, please.
Item ninety-eight is a request by Dream Design International, Inc. for preliminary plat on lots one and two of Rushmore Center located at fifteen twenty-one Luna Avenue. The recommendation is to approve with stiffs. That is my motion.
We have a motion and second for approval with stipulations. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item number ninety-nine, please.
Item ninety-nine is a request by Fisk Land Surveying and Consulting Engineers for Randy Long for preliminary plat in Village of the Green, number two subdivision located at fourteen one-thirty and fourteen one-twenty-five Double Eagle Court. Move approval with stipulations.
We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations dealing with item number ninety-nine. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. Item one-hundred, please.
Item one-hundred is a request by the city for preliminary plat on lots one, two, and three of the Fish Hatchery subdivision located at Clayhorn Springs State Fish Hatchery southwest to the intersection of Jackson Boulevard and Chapel Lane. Move to approve with stipulations.
We have a motion, second for approval with stipulations. This is item number one-hundred, preliminary plat, Jackson Boulevard and Chapel Lane. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're back to Legal and Finance Committee items. Deb, could you please read in item number one-oh-one, please?
One-oh-one is request the mayor appoint a new eleven-member signed task force consisting of city council members, the outdoor advertising industry, the citizens not related to the sign industry to review and recommend long-term solutions to the sign code with the sunset date of February first, 2011, and to impose a moratorium on the new and replacement off-premise sign application and/or approvals until such time that this task force presents an acceptable solution to the Rapid City Municipal Code for approval. And I'll yield the floor for discussion.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In the sake of a dog chasing its tail, I accrue, I agree with task force and, but I believe it would be, we would be better served to actually break these items into two items. One is to talk about the, the task force, and two would be to talk about any so-called moratorium. I think that, just to be fair, and I don't always agree with Mr. Casey, but he pointed out the fact that we didn't really reference this item ahead of time. I think this is something that really can affect someone's business after, you know, some certain long discussions about the moratorium. I honestly don't believe it's necessary, but I don't want to jeopardize the task force that was made up of council members and outdoor advertising and citizens and looking for some sort of, some fact-finding mission versus a, a solution. Because in the end, the solution will lie right here at the desk of each council person. So if we would, I guess I'll make a substitute motion to break those items into two, if that's appropriate, and simply for, you know, the reason, I mean, I, I think by posting a moratorium on these guys tonight, not, I mean, we could post moratoriums on everybody that does business in this community, and I think that we would, we could get ourselves in a situation that we don't want picking and choosing which businesses are going to be which. I understand the spirit of it, but I think that we can accomplish the same if we, so my motion, Jason, do I, can I make a motion, Mr. Mayor, after I've spoken?
You certainly can. You can make a substitute.
Would be to divide the two items, divide the task force and divide the moratorium. So that'd be my motion.
Yep.
Or substitute motion.
We have substitute motion for division. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion and a second for division. Now, what we do here is we actually debate whether or not it's appropriate to divide the question. That's the only thing that's on the table now. We're not going to talk about one issue or the other. We're going to only talk about whether or not it's appropriate to separate the two issues. We take a vote on that, and then once that is either voted up or voted down, then we're back to actually dealing with the issues either collectively or separately. Everyone clear on that motion? Okay. So the motion is for division. Discussion on the motion for division. Alderman Quaker, do you want to talk about division? Okay, let's go to Alderwoman Hadcock as far as on division only, please.
I, I think it's pretty basic. I don't think this is going to hurt to divide it because either way, we're going to come to the solution. So I'm not opposed to this. Thank you.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you. I also am in favor of the division, and I think it was implicit within the way it was written, using the conjunction of "and" within the English language. So obviously, this was intended to be divided. Thank you.
Yep, very good. Motion on the floor is motion for division, which means we would separate this into two issues. One, the, the appointment of a new eleven-member signed task force to consist of the council members, outdoor advertising industry, and citizens. And then the second issue would be taken up, would be the question of imposition of a moratorium. Okay? All those in favor, the division motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Okay, the motion is divided. What we will do is we will take up the first part of that, and that is the, I will need a motion to see, Jason, I'm going to need a motion here, aren't I? We'll need a motion to actually request the mayor appoint a new eleven-member signed task force.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the makeup of the task force and what they are chartered to do with is very important in this situation. I don't want to get into the same position that we were before where there's a basic determined outcome. I think that, I think Alderman Davis made this motion with the intent to come forward with, with a solid, supported recommendation that achieves the goals of both the outdoor advertising and the, the citizens of Rapid City. So I think it's important that as we go forward, we identify how, what the makeup of this task force should look like, and spelled out here, city council members, the outdoor advertising industry, and citizens not related to the sign industry. I would, if appropriate, would, I'd like to see some professional people with expertise in this area, if, if possible, if they so chose to want to be on this sign task force that they come forward, and that what, what the task force brings forward is, is facts, based upon fact, factual information that provides the outcome that the council's looking for. Because the ultimate decision lies with each individual council person that up here is elected by their people in their war. I mean, that's clearly what it is. I mean, in understanding that if they want to bring forward a recommendation, that's fine, but then it's going to be tossed around back and forth. If they bring forward the facts, they'll be, it'll be, the facts are hard to dispute, and the council people will be able to make decisions based upon facts. We've had a lot of conjecture in the past meetings on this thing, and I, quite frankly, I don't, I'm, I'm not interested in any more conjecture or people's opinions. I would like to have the facts. That way, when I make my decision for the citizens of the city, I can have it based upon those. So, I mean, if that's, if that's the spirit of this and that's what we're trying to achieve, I can support this. Thank you.
Thank you. There again, just a reminder, the motion on the floor is ask the mayor to appoint eleven-member task force and actually have them come back to review and recommend a long-term solution. So I believe in response to your statement, Mr. Wyffenbach, I think the intent of the motion would ask the committee to bring back at least a recommendation. So I think that's the understanding. Any further discussion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Sorry, I just spaced off. I was looking at something else. Just a question for Mr. Davis, as I could, to make sure this is on record. On the sign code, for long-term solutions to the sign code, is this for on- and off-premise advertising plus LEDs that they're looking at for the sign code?
Let's go to Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may have a little latitude and address the question of Alderman Hadcock and Wyffenbach at the same time. The intent when I made the motion was multi-related. Certainly, this is something that I've heard from many constituents about, and the, the fact of the matter is if we do nothing, we will have something brought to us. I believe that that's, if, if we don't believe that, I think we're being very naive. And I don't believe that if it comes to us in the form of a referendum, that we're going to have a method that's going to be extremely workable for any of us. And I mean that in the sense of the council. I mean that in the sense of the sign industry. I think we're going to have something handed to us that we're going to have to work with that we may not like, any of us. I think we need to find a method in advance that is a compromise that satisfies the needs of the business community, the sign business, and keeps them in business. That satisfies the, the needs of the constituency that says the hundred ninety-seven sign permits that are out there are too many. We need to reduce them. Before we're brought a mandate that says eliminate them all. Because if that happens, and we've had this discussion that there's ways that it may or may not happen, but if that referendum were passed and that mandate was placed upon us, we've got a taking situation that could become hundreds of millions of dollars that the city would have to pay. I mean, you could kiss away the budget discussion that we're talking about here. It, it, it could bankrupt the city or certainly change the outlook that all of us have. So the intent of the motion that I made was simply to avoid that referendum and to satisfy both parties. The result that I would hope that the task force returns to us is a workable sign code that addresses both on- and off-premise signs, both static and electronic, both new and replacement signs. That, the sign code allows the sign industry to function within that sign code without having to bring each and every sign before this body for approval. That's what seems to be such a waste to me, is that we're addressing every time these guys need to have a sign approved, that we're, we're going through all these hoops over whether or not we're going to put an electronic sign on the back of a sign that's already there, or how many credits there is or isn't, or have we used them, or have, when was the last time one was, why not let's sit down and have this thing honestly hashed out once, get the thing so that the sign industry understands the public wants fewer signs? Let's find a way to give them what they want and keep the sign industry in business. That's the only result that both sides are going to be happy with. And if we don't allow that to happen from this dais, we're going to be forced to have something brought upon all of us that may not be very workable for everyone. That's the intent of the motion. Did that help?
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Very good. Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to finish.
Okay, let's go back to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I guess that was my point is, and why I didn't agree with it at first, is because of the on- and off-premise, there's visual pollution in both. You have billboards or signs that are on-premise that are as big as billboards. You have LEDs that are working in Rapid City on on-premise that are more trouble than some of the LEDs that are from billboard companies. That was my intent to bring it back and to thank you, Mr. Davis, on your work and your fortitude on bringing this forward, because I think it covers all of what the issue is. And that is visual pollution through signs that should be fair on both sides. So I appreciate your work on this, Mr. Davis, and I just wanted to make sure we were clarifying that we were covering all three of those issues. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Further discussion? Let's go to, Mr. Davis, do you have any other comments to make? Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Were all those things put into that motion? I mean, was that the motion's intent? Okay.
I think that reflects, is reflected.
I just, I got to make one comment, because the sign code has been established, and I think that the, the sign company knows the rules, but there's one particular sentence that keeps them bringing forward every, every new static billboard or whatever happens. It is, it's where it talks about the council can oppose upon the sign company anything that they feel that they want to. So with that in mind, understand that that's why they bring those forward. It's not that they don't understand the code or somebody else doesn't understand the code. There's one particular item on use on review. It's the last item after they go through everything they do, and I, I see developers in here who could probably contest to this. They go through everything. They meet every criteria that is set out or laid out except for the last one. And the last one says, whatever else we as a body decide is necessary, or deemed pertinent is what the words are used in there, deemed pertinent, which means what we feel necessary. So every time the council changes, the rules change for these people. So it's very evident to me that this is not something created from the sign company. There's been codes made, codes made, codes made, but until that gets, till the, till that sentence gets removed from the development community, from the sign community, no matter what sign ordinance, whatever we pass, we're going to have the same issue. Because each council, as it changes, every time they feel something is necessary, they're going to oppose it upon these people that are trying to do business within our city. So, and with that being said, I can, I can still support it, but just let everybody know that's exactly how this came to be.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to make a comment to Alderman Davis that I, I think this is a wonderful way to approach a problem, and I think this is absolutely the most objective and logical approach that I have seen after looking over the record for some time, that we will get a viewpoint of all parties involved. And I, I just have to commend you on, on that approach. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to request the mayor appoint a new eleven-member signed task force. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion passes. We're to the second part of the, of the division, and that is the moratorium. Chair would look for a motion, and that motion would be to impose a moratorium on all new and replacement off-premise sign applications and/or approvals until such time that this task force presents an acceptable solution to the Rapid City Common Council for its approval. Do we have a motion?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion on that motion. Jason, do you have a comment before we start the discussion? Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. I would recommend that there be one minor alteration to the motion, and that would be to delete the words "and/or approvals." The moratorium, I believe, should only be on the acceptance of new applications. People that have already submitted an application, if there are any, already have what are known as vested rights, and I think that would create a problem to attempt to impose a moratorium on those folks at this point. So, just on the acceptance of applications.
Sure, ask a question. You were the motion maker. Go ahead, ask a question.
Jason, the intent of that was to take away the window between now and whenever this was enacted, that we didn't have a rush on City Hall, so to speak, of applications. If this were to go through tonight, would it be, would that eliminate that, that issue? Or will there still be a window that we could have a rush of applications, in which case it's, it's a waste?
Mr. Green, in other words, when does moratorium become effective?
If, if the motion is approved as it's on the floor right now, it would become effective twenty days after publication. If you determined that the motion was necessary for the preservation of the city and its institutions and added an emergency clause to it, then it could become effective upon publication.
Yep. Very good. Is motion maker all right with removing the words "and/or approval?"
As long as we're able to phrase it so that it adds the emergency clause, so that we don't open the window of a rush on, on City Hall with applications. That, that's the concern. So however we phrase it to, to avoid that, Jason, that's, that was the intent, and that's what I'd like to avoid.
Yep. Well, what we'll need to do is we will need to treat that as an amendment to the motion. Because that's, that is a separate debatable issue, and that does require a two-thirds vote, correct, Jason? Is it simple majority? I'm slipping back to my legislative days, I'm sorry. Okay, so I need that in the form of an amendment. Nope, we need to deal, we deal with amendment first. So we need a, a motion to amend. Okay? And we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to amend to include an emergency clause. Jason, is that the appropriate terminology?
To determine that the action is necessary for the preservation of the existing public institutions of the city of Rapid City.
Okay, very good. Everyone clear on that motion? In essence, what we're doing is we are voting whether or not to amend it to include the provision that it becomes effective immediately. Okay? Discussion on that amendment only, please. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't know that it's of that moral or substantial public interest that these people can't go on without their business, but I'll ask the question to Marsha, and I would like to know how many billboards have been put up in the last year. Marsha?
I'm going to defer to Brad Solons in the office. I think he answered that question at committee day.
Brad, new, new billboards. How many new, new billboards have been put up?
Brad?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Brad from Development Services, Division of Growth Management. In the last year, none.
Zero?
Zero.
How, how many signed credits have been used in the last year?
Brad?
Zero.
I had one more question, Brad, and it's on the tip of my tongue. The one thing I mentioned earlier, and at the sake of reiterating myself, the reason that the billboards don't get put up- that the billboards don't get put up is because we feel like they shouldn't get put up. So, they're all go through the use on review process, so no matter what happens, it comes to the council on use on review, and if the council deems it's not pertinent, they don't put it up, they don't let it happen. Is that my, that's my understanding on use on review, is that correct, Brad?
I don't know about that. I know that in order to put up a billboard sign, or to alter a billboard sign, you need to obtain a use on review, and city council is the approving body, yes.
That's the question. Thanks for reading between the lines for me, and not, for me not articulating myself well, but the last criteria on a use on review is anything else the council deems pertinent and necessary, which in that form could be anything. We've proven that already. I mean, we've turned down billboards for no particular reason at all in the past. So, with that in mind, I, I don't really see the reason for the moratorium. I think it's a, it's, it might be, at this point, an inappropriate business practice for these particular people, where they, they've been beat up a lot. I think they're, I think we have a plan that, that at least given a chance, to take place, even though years ago, this same discussion had taken place, and the citizens of Rapid City had decided, through their council people, to enact a credit system.
Mr. Wyffenbach, just a reminder, the motion actually on the floor is the amendment. I believe that what you're talking to is more in the spirit of, of the moratorium itself, which is actually going to be the secondary action.
Sure, I'm not, a lot of times I'm not good at following principles, but understanding the real idea. And I'll go back to, then I'll ask Jason Green to explain to me this provision, this so-called emergency provision, that is so important that we haven't put up a billboard in over a year, that we have to add this emergency clause.
Mr. Green?
The decision as to whether or not an emergency exists is one that is within the province of the council, based on the facts and circumstances that exist today. You've identified some relevant facts and circumstances. That's, that's the best I can do on that.
So, can we identify those relevant facts and circumstances that are appropriate? If it's a relevant fact and circumstance that we need to deal with, I can handle that, but just because we feel like it should be, I'm not going to deal with that. That's what got us into situations in the past.
Mr. Green?
Well, I think Mr. Davis explained some of the, the rationale for determining that an emergency exists, avoiding a potential rush of applications to potentially beat any amendments to the sign code. I think that's a perfectly rational basis for the council to take that, or to make that decision.
All right, so we got zero people waiting in line to get in the front door, so we shouldn't unlock the door just because those zero people might come in. All right.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock. There again, reminder, the motion on the floor is the motion to amend, which is putting in the provision to put an emergen, I'm going to call it emergency clause, because that's what we used to, but basically determining that the motion, the motion would, in essence, allow the, the moratorium, moratorium become effective immediately upon publication. Very good, good point. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
I think the discussion has been good so far, and I think I know where I'm going, so thank you for the discussion.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor to...
Look, I don't, you can't, we have to dispose of the amendment on the floor. You can't amend an amendment.
Okay.
My apologies, but, yep, okay. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a simple comment. I think history, if you look back just a few short years, history would show that my fear of a run on City Hall for applications has justification, and I believe that there was just such a run a few years back when we had a, a change in the billboard laws. So, I, I think there's a, a reason for that, that emergency clause.
Very good. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, but Brad, I'm going to have a question for Brad.
Go ahead, please.
We just, we just enacted a moratorium in less than a year ago. Did you have a rush on applications at that time?
Brad?
No.
All right, so, I mean, we had a moratorium, we went through this once before, I mean, I just think we're beating a dead horse. I don't, I don't see a reason for it. I, I appreciate the spirit of, of the intent of it, but I think that we are casting these sign people as bad people. I don't think they're bad people. I think they're the victim of bad policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is the motion to amend, which would, in essence, enact the resolution establishing a moratorium effective upon publication. Did I, how's that, Jason, for a statement? Okay, very good. See, no further lights. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a quick roll call, please.
Brown?
Aye.
Mason?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
Wa?
Aye.
That's eight to two.
Okay, motion passes eight to two. The motion is amended. Now we're back to the original motion, which is to, let me read it real quick, and then I'm going to go to Alderman Quaker, to impose a moratorium on all new and replacement off-premise sign applications until such time that this task force presents an acceptable solution to the Rapid City Common Council for its approval, with the amendment which would make the resolution effective immediately upon publication. With that, Alderman Quaker.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to offer an amendment to the motion on the floor to extend the moratorium to on-premise electronic signs, which is, is not intended to apply to lighting, to lighting your signs, so it has to be an on, on-premise electronic LED sign.
You talking about reader boards?
Yes.
I'm going to go to Jason Green.
As I understand, the amendment that was offered, the intent is to include electronic signs, in whatever form, whether they're reader boards, or television screens, whatever, but not to include illumination of otherwise static signs.
Right. And I don't want it unintentionally to apply to somebody putting a, a small, open sign on the front window of their business.
Yep, as long as it's not electronic. Because that would, an electronic open sign would be included in the moratorium.
I don't think that was his intent. His intent, I believe, and Alderman Quaker, please correct me if I'm wrong, his intent was to include electronic reader boards within that moratorium.
Yeah, like, like Civic Center type of sign, you know, I don't want, I don't want to have a lot of unintended consequences here and cause problems for business owners who want to put an open sign on their front door.
You're not intending to include neon signs? Is that...
Okay, we're splitting hairs here. I believe the, the motion can be made to, to amend to also include electronic reader boards, that is, separate from a static board in our code. Is that correct, Brad?
The sign code defines these as electronic message center signs.
Okay, there's your language.
I think that's...
That covers it. That's my intent, that's my motion.
That was your motion, correct?
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to amend, and that motion to amend is to include, say it again, electronic message boards.
Electronic message centers.
Okay.
On-premise.
Okay, on-premise electronic message centers. Got it. Further discussion on the amendment? Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so I can be clear on what this electronic message center is, would the, the electronic portion of the sign at the top of East North Street, near on the border, would, Brad, would that be an example?
Let's go to Brad, but I think the answer is yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Motion is the motion to amend. See, no further lights. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Now we're back to the original motion, as amended, and twice, yes. And let me read that to you. The motion would be to impose a moratorium on all new and replacement off-premise signs and on-premise electronic message centers. Got it? Okay. Until such time that the task force can present an acceptable solution to the Rapid City Council for its approval, and that would include the, the enforcement, or the application being, become effective with an emergency clause as of publication. Jason, did I catch everything? Okay. Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to include anybody in Rapid City trying to collect a paycheck. I mean, this is incredible. That's being facetious, but the point I want to make, and I'll ask Jason this question, is this emergency clause thing, as it is being adopted in here, as you seem to, like, I guess, how does it apply? I don't understand the emergency. I, I don't understand the moratorium in itself when we have, but, much less the emergency clause.
Let's go to...
This is another opportunity to set us up for, and might as well just send them a letter along with the Melody Acres people.
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Well, this has absolutely nothing to do with Melody Acres, and it's actually, the action now is distinct from the action as to whether or not to include the emergency clause. The council's voted on that. What, what the difference is, is that if the council takes an action, normally it becomes effective 20 days after publication. By declaring an emergency, the action becomes effective upon publication. So you don't, you eliminate that 20-day waiting period.
So, I'm just trying to understand, declaring an emergency? That's what we're doing? This, am I clear?
Jason, why don't you give us a specific language under state statute which would give us the authority? There again, I've been referring to it as emergency clause, because that's what we did in the legislature. I think there's specific language that needs to be part of this motion.
This, the council has determined by its amendment, and if the motion is approved, council will determine that the action is necessary for the immediate preservation of the public peace, health, safety, or support of municipal government and its existing public institutions.
So, can we identify which one of those that, that actually adheres to? I mean, we're going to pass this motion, and I want to know how that adheres to, one of those things, I happen to have our time hearing what you're saying, but each one of those outlined, which ones does it apply to?
Mr. Green?
Well, that, that's really a question for the council, but I'll suggest that it's necessary for the preservation of the public peace, health, safety, because that's the basis that the council uses when it enacts a regulatory measure such as the sign code. I think the council is being asked to declare that it's important to maintain the status quo while new regulations for preserving the public health, safety, and welfare are discussed, debated, and potentially implemented.
Okay. How many, how many times can the city move the ball on an industry or a particular business in this community? I mean, clearly, the rules have been written. We continue to change the rules and no avail, because everything has to go through the use on review. This is like the dog chasing his tail all over again, so just want to let my councilman know when we have this conversation. And the moratorium, I think, is, is, is bad business, it sends a bad, it sends a bad message to people trying to relocate to our community. And it's not only reflective on the sign company, but it's reflective on people who do business in our community. I just, not that I'm advocating, and it sure may seem like I'm advocating for the signs, but I'm not. This is amazing to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to comment on some of the information that's been brought forward, and actually in light of that, I, I believe I may have made a mistake in actually suggesting that we include the emergency clause after the information of the fact that the, there have been zero signs brought forward and zero signed credits after this last moratorium, and after the enlightening definition of emergency by our city attorney, a certain city attorney, excuse me. I, I just feel like this may be stretching terms and redefining them in order to make it convenient for us to do this. And then also taking a thought on my own, just to wrap up here, looking at this based on principle, which Alderman Wyffenbach suggested and alluded to, I, I must ask myself, and I guess I would pose the question to everyone else, of whether or not we, as the authority of the municipality, have the right to arbitrarily stop one business or another simply because we want to discuss how they operate. And I, I guess, for myself, I am coming to the conclusion that that is not my role, and I will probably be voting no on the moratorium part of this. Thank you.
We'll go to Dave Davis.
Thank you. Once again, the reason that the moratorium was part of, of the original motion and has been part of the, the amended motion, the intent was to bring all players to the table motivated to cooperate. We've had a sign committee in the past that was not effective, by their own words, basically asked to be relieved of their duties and asked to have a new one, asked us to, to have the mayor appoint a new one. There were multiple comments made to me as to why they were as ineffective as they Alderman Wyffenbach has, has pointed out several times that there have been zero credits turned in and zero signs approved, and I certainly recognize that. That's all the more reason why I'm concerned about the moratorium, because it really isn't... I, I believe we're comparing apples and oranges. I'm not as concerned about a new sign going up. First of all, I'm not sure where one would, would go up. I'm not sure legally there is a place that we could put one. What I'm really concerned about is the discussion that we had 45 days ago, or 60 days ago, of replacing the, the static sign on the back of an existing electronic on La Crosse Street. That is the sign that I'm worried about, and many of them like it across town. How many statics can be turned into electronics in the timeframe that it takes for this committee to come back to us six months from now with no decision? And once again, we're back at the same place that we are today, with absolutely nothing. Now, I'm back at that same place that I, I mentioned a few minutes ago. I truly don't believe that our constituency is going to continue to allow us to give them lip service that, gee, we want to do something about the signs, and we continue to do nothing. They will do something eventually, if we choose not to. And right now, if we keep continuing to put together committees with no intended end result, I think we're inviting them to bring something forward. So, the reason for the moratorium is very, very simple. It is not a, a statement of mistrust or distrust of any members of the committee, but rather a point of motivation. If all players coming to the table are in the same place, that nothing moves forward until we get this thing done, till we sit down and roll up our sleeves, as Alderman Kroger said about the budget, and we come forward with a plan that we can attack and can actually bring to the council, then we're all motivated to go to work. And we have a sunset date of February 1st, but if this committee would meet and could actually hash something out and bring it by December 1st, all the more power to them. There's nothing that says they have to take till February 1st to hash it out. The key here is that we give them a reason to make it work as soon as they can. And I think that is, that is really the intent, is that we give everyone involved a legitimate motivation to move forward, and not just to waste another period of time, and we find ourselves back here in the same place. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Okay, thank, thank you. Mr. Green, there was a comment made, I think from Epic, that they didn't get proper notice or whatever. Is that really an issue here, or...
Mr. Green?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only notice that's required is that the agenda be published and posted 24 hours in advance of the meeting. I believe that email came through on Friday, so clearly they had all the legal notice that they're entitled to.
Okay, so, thank you. At the last sign committee, last task force, the sign companies said that they did not, they would not be bringing any signs forward, and that a moratorium was not needed. So I don't think it's going to damage the company any. So I don't think it's going to damage the company any to impose a moratorium, and I think it could motivate the parties to come to an agreement. And I know that the number one thing I hear now, when people know I'm on City Council, is they don't want billboards. And I think it's probably time for, you know, this keeps coming up over and over again, but the City Council, really, we need to stand up and lead. Our, the people that vote for us do not want billboards. They want this, you know, we need to move forward and decide so that, one, the businesses can have, you know, know what parameters they're going to work under. And, and also, because unfortunately, what we have is a collision of, we want to support business, but we need to also do what our people that live in our city want us to do, and that is to limit billboards. So I will be voting for the moratorium in hopes that we will get through this, and that we will have something that we can work with in the future, and that billboards don't keep coming back to the council like Melody Acres does, because we need to make decisions and move on, and make the tough decisions, because that's what the people that voted for us want us to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the sake of repeating myself for the third time, because I know a third time's a charm, and it can get people uptight, I have a question for Brad. And the question, Brad, is, is how many credits does it take right now to change out a digital billboard?
Mr. Brad?
Zero. Okay. I'm trying to think of the last regulation that was made in regards to these billboards. We just went through this whole thing and passed a new ordinance in reference to the sign credits that it takes to, to change, to, I'm not exactly sure how this all works, to change out the faces on a billboard. Maybe Marcia could better answer that question. We just didn't go through this previously.
We went through it, but it actually failed. The council didn't approve anything. That was a recommendation from the last night.
Now we're back at this again. The whole, the whole key here, guys, is the USON review. And to think that Lamar and Epic or whoever is not going to come to the table, there are the people that have come to the table. It's the city that keeps moving the ball on them. USON review says, whatever the council feels, deems pertinent and necessary at the time, which could be anything. We've already gone through that. Or it could be nothing, in the case of the last time we, the first time we originally dropped their billboard. I'm not going to argue it anymore. I've said it three times. I hope that it sinks in this time for everybody to understand, the USON review changes the rules. This has been to the council once. The council obviously shot down the credit issue or whatever it was, even though Lamar was willing to, to do whatever it took on their signed credits to make it happen. They were willing to deal with this. And we can go back and look on the tapes and see Mr. Olson and Mr. Rumpke up here saying that they're willing to give us the signed credits necessary to change. So the moratorium, I don't understand it. I mean, I'm not going to keep arguing about it, but I want to make my point very clear. The USON review is the item that is the point, the point of contention that stops any billboard activity. It's already in place. It goes through the process, and the council, if they don't feel like, for whatever reason it is, that they don't want to change that billboard out, they don't have to. So I'm not sure that I have gotten my point through, but I'm hoping that I do. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion, let's go to Alderman Gary Brown.
Based on people repeating themselves for the third time, I call the question.
Is there any objection to calling the question? Is there any objection? Did you want to speak, Deb?
I have to speak.
Okay, there is objection. So, did you want to take a vote, or do you want to just? Okay. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Thank you. This is the first time I spoke on this. Very good discussion, that's why I did listen very well tonight, and I heard a lot of what was being said. Unfortunately, I want change on, on and off-premise signs and LEDs, and I think that's going to, unfortunately, put us in a predicament where it's going to cause moratoriums and things to happen in order for, to make that change. And at this point, I think that's going to be necessary. And if that change occurs from that, it's going to be a positive change for us and the constituents, and also for Brad, because he's been having to go through these particular issues a long time with no particular sign code that he can actually rule on on and off-premise and LEDs together. So I think that's going to make one of those processes and procedures work a lot, a lot better. My question would be, Jason, again, on the replacement signs. Legally, if they are in the process right now, they can come through and they can ask us, and we can say, no, we have a moratorium, or yes, you know, we've came through the process.
Let's go to Jason Green, City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For any sign that's in the process right now, I don't believe the moratorium that you enact today would be a valid basis for refusing to approve or act on it. There may be other reasons that it may be denied, though.
Thank you, Jason. So Brad, do we, again, have any replacement ones that are coming in that would cause this issue to this date?
Brad?
That's right. We have an application to rebuild a sign in a new location.
So would that would be included in on the moratorium? Okay, that would be my answer. Thank you very much.
Okay. Brad?
It's a static board, it's not electronic.
Okay. Very good. Further discussion, motion is for approval as the motion has been amended twice. Everyone, anybody need the motion repeated? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Let's take a roll call, please.
Mason? Peterson? Wyffenbach? Davis? Hattcock? Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
Aye.
Wa?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Eight to two.
Motion passes on eight to two vote, correct?
No.
Very good. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Item 102, Deb, if you'd read that in, please.
102 is to change the travel policy so the City Council as a whole votes on any travel over $500, and a move denial as in recommended by legal and finance.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second for denial. Discussion on that motion. Any discussion? Go to Alderman Sam Quaker.
I'm assuming that this means any travel over $500 for elected officials and not for, right?
That's correct.
Elected officials. I think that this is something that is a reasonable change. I think more importantly, however, would be to come back and put, or event, or event language back in the, in the policy that says if you go above, let's say, $1,000 or $1,500 per person or event, you know, that, that triggers accountability. Right now, we've lost virtually all oversight of the travel expenditures, except when we ask for an accounting of the expenditures, which would typically be at the budget. So this amendment might not be perfect, but I think it's, it's a good start, and I support it as long as it applies just to the elected officials. I think addressing it for everybody else should be addressed more in terms of, of or event language with a higher limit. Thank you.
Thank you. And there again, point of clarification, I may have misspoke here. The motion was actually on City Council travel. Okay. Further discussion, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
Yes, one of the reasons was because of some of the way we do business when we have those events that come up on some people, and I don't think you, losing oversight on travel is, is the right thing to say on this. We have, if I'm correct, do we have this travel policy or the amount people have traveled on our website? Because I think that was one of the things we had asked for. Or at any time can call down City Hall and ask what expenditures as City Council members have spent this year?
What we do, Deb?
Yes.
What we do do is, we do track all the travel, both as far as from the mayor and also the City Council members. That is available at any time in the mayor's office. As far as placing it actually on the internet, I know that we've placed reports on the internet, but I don't think that we update those on a, on a, on a regular schedule. We can certainly do that, update it, say quarterly, something like that, but I don't believe that, that we go in and say, once every 30 days, and actually update it. But absolutely, is it open to the public? It is open to the public for inspection.
And if we need oversight in that way so people feel more comfortable that it's being more transparent, I'm not offended by that. But I think when you, you're getting a little particular on the 500 to 1,500, hopefully, when we go on our trips, people know because we're up here telling them about that we are going on a trip, or when we come back, we are giving that oversight by telling what we did on the trip. If people want to ask me at any time what I've done or what I'm going to do, I'll give them that oversight. So it's unfortunate that we use those type of words when some of us have used that travel for a very positive education in order to help our constituents and City Hall here. So, thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I would like to see an amendment to this travel policy. One of my concerns is that if someone has to fill in, I've broken record in legal and finance, if someone has to fill in for another council person, maybe that's already been approved because of illness or something, that I'm afraid that this amendment would then, would not allow the other person to fill in for them, because it would have to come back through the council part, so. And I don't know exactly what the verbiage should be, but that, it's almost like if it's been approved for one, then we should be able to let the, someone fill in with just the leadership approval as opposed to having to come back through council again. I don't know if someone else might have a suggestion, perhaps leadership, I would, but, and then I also question the amount of travel, because $500, these days, you can't hardly buy an airplane ticket for that, so.
Yeah.
Those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put this on here simply because I wanted to be part of the discussion if people decide to take trips for some strategic instrument, whatever that may be, understanding that I'm not going to sit here and beat a dead horse. If you guys don't want to do it, that's the way it goes. It has nothing to do with oversight or accountability or any of that stuff. But I've been on the council three years, and I've had no need to go anywhere. Maybe I drove to peer or something like that. Didn't affect my ability to do my job, so. And there are timeframes that are available. I mean, if you're going to, if, if the council so needs or so deems it necessary, or deems it pertinent, as, as we like to say, then there would be a process in place if they could bring it in front of their colleagues and be actually vetted. This process eliminates that vetting, but yet, when I go out there and have to answer to my constituents why the council's spending X amount of dollars on travel, that'll be very tough for me to answer, because I won't be clued in on what happened. So I appreciate it. Vote as you may.
Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. After hearing some of the comments, I just wanted to share some of my own thoughts that I'm having on some of these issues. I've heard it referenced that this is about, the purpose for travel is for education, which is really synonymous with saying the imparting of knowledge upon oneself. And if Mr. Wyffenbach is simply asking for us to account for where we're going in order to get a certain type of education, then I don't really see the problem in standing up and saying, accounting for where I spend certain money for an education. However, I would agree with Mr. Wyffenbach that as technology in our society grows, the ability to communicate and impart knowledge over long distances without physically traveling there is becoming more and more readily available. For example, in our college education system across this state, we've invested in hundreds of millions of dollars for a fiber network to impart education for people across this state without getting on a bus or traveling in an airplane. So I see absolutely no reason why we shouldn't be accountable for, accounting for why we would need to physically transport ourselves just to educate ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hattcock.
I'm not trying to beat a dead horse, but Bonnie is right. What she's talking about is my sister ended up with cancer and, and didn't find that out until about a week before I had a stipend of $850. It would have cost the city $400. And there's no way that could have ran through the council for her to go on my trip, because we didn't have two weeks in order to do that. We only had a certain amount of time. So we were being transparent in a sense, but we also can't come through the council because by that meeting, that, by that time, the meeting be over. And that's what we're trying to say. We want to be transparent, but some of these things, when emergencies happen, happens, we still want someone to represent. So, and we've also paid for some, or we're getting a stipend, or it's basically paid for anyway. So we're looking at circumstances, not that we don't want to be transparent, that there is circumstances, that things happen where we need help. And that's what, and that's why we have council president and vice president doing that help and doing that transparency at any time for you to ask those questions.
Very good. Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Dave Davis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems that we are taking this down a road of confusion. The question of accountability keeps coming up, that if we don't have this $500 mark that comes before the entire council, that we have no accountability. My understanding is it still goes before the mayor or council leadership for approval. That sounds like accountability to me, unless we don't trust the mayor or the council leadership. So to me, the question isn't whether it's accountable. The question that I'm hearing asked is, do we not trust ourselves? That's really what I'm, what I'm hearing. It isn't a matter of whether or not we want to okay a $500 expenditure, but whether we need to drag it out in front of everybody every time, or whether we trust our council leadership and mayor to be the, the vetting of a $500 decision. And yet, we make decisions like that. Our constituents have voted us in to make million-dollar decisions, and we do that very openly. And yet, there are many thousand-dollar decisions inside of those that no one ever sees, and they trust that we're doing the right things. And, and I certainly hope that we are, and I hope with the right intentions, that we vet those out in the budget next week. But by the same token, inside of each of those budgets, there are those travel expenditure lines. And I think that's where the, as, when it comes back to the council, if it is something that is a valid travel item, that the validity is going to be questioned by council leadership before it's approved. And with that in mind, I truly believe that that in itself gives us the accountability and the transparency. Councilman Mason, I totally agree with you as far as the, the ability to gather information But I, but I have to say, there are still things that take place face to face that can't be had any other way. There are still networks that, that are made and created that we need to be able to be there in, in every aspect of life. So to discount that as a whole, I think would be incorrect on our part. So please, keep your mind open to that, that I, that I think that we, we know that there are times when we need to be there, and there's more to be gained. So with that said, I yield.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Bonnie Peterson.
Okay, thank you. I, yes, I, I'm all for transparency, and, and I know that people are concerned, because frequently, the only time we travel is to go and have a good time. You know, we go see our families, or go on vacations. But when I went on this trip, I left Rapid City Wednesday night and got back Friday night, and went to Washington, D.C., and spent one night there. I was at a workshop all of one day and half of another day, and that was given a stipend. I did not come back. I did not ask the city to reimburse me for my meals or my taxis. I paid for those on my own. And so I'm a very responsible person, and I, we have $160 million budget that the City Council oversees, and to think that you, we would never need any education to do a better job- any education to do a better job is, um, or to help our constituents because one of the topics it was, was bank on, and it's one of the tiers to try to help people get out of poverty, and so this comes back and helps our city to be a better city. Believe me, it was no, uh, no fun sitting on an airplane for those many hours in a short amount of time. But I have no problem with setting some kind of travel policy, as I said earlier, it's just that I hate to see that we have to come in such, every situation that, um, because it could be a situation where we could buy a, a plane ticket for three fifty, but by the time we went through city council and all to approve everything, the ticket's now eight hundred dollars. So I'm just saying, um, you know, and I'm all for, I'd like to see us put, uh, our travels on the website and let people know, like, how long we were gone from here to there, what our seminars were, um, you know, I'm all for transparency and so I, I, anyway, thank you, I don't need to say anything else.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Aaron Costello.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I like what Alderman Mason said earlier about utilizing our technology, and, um, it's certainly something we need to look into. And as opposed to the, our, in line with the motion on the floor, I'm not in favor, I think the current policy we have suffices, and if any of you feel that you're not getting any information, not being, uh, debriefed enough from a council member that's traveled, call me out. Call out Alderman Kroger and I for not keeping you versed on what's going on, because that is part of our job.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to comment on, uh, Bonnie Peterson, Alderwoman Peterson's account of her travel, which took approximately one minute and thirty seconds, and, uh, as that seems to be very, very easy for Ms. Peterson to do in such a short amount of time, I just am frankly having a difficult time understanding why it's, why this is such a highly contested issue to simply ask how your trip went, which apparently it seems to have gone quite well for Ms. Peterson, and also to touch upon Alderwoman Hadcock's comment, um, I, I, I do feel very sorry for the trouble that she's had to go through, but in this particular instance, even with the new policy being proposed, uh, since your travel is actually on this, tonight's bill list, you actually fall under that policy as your plane ticket was four hundred and fifty dollars and eighty cents, and, uh, I guess I'm not understanding that in many of these circumstances, we aren't, uh, trying to nitpick here, but I, I think there's nothing wrong in asking, um, for an accounting or to give an account of what we're doing as alderpeople, and, uh, with the posting on the website, I understand that idea and that thought process of pointing out that we are giving an account after the fact, but I, I don't see anything wrong with actually asking for it beforehand in a justification. Thank you.
Motion on the floor, just, there again, just for everyone's information. The motion, uh, the item on the agenda is change travel policy so the council as a whole votes on any travel over five hundred dollars. The motion on the floor is for denial. Okay, so the motion would not change, uh, the current policy. Okay? Any further discussion? Is your light now working, Ron?
Yeah.
Okay. Let's go to Alderman, been using it too much. Alderman, Ron.
I knew, I was coming. I knew, I knew, and I'll keep it short. Well, this is, this is a particular reason for why I wanted to change the policy. I had no idea that anybody on this council had flew anywhere or done anything, so, I mean, that's, that's point in hand right there. So thank you, and when my constituents ask me, I won't have the answer. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for denial. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Roll call, please.
Hadcock. Kroger.
Aye.
Okay, let's start over again.
Okay.
The motion on the floor is for denial. If you vote aye, that means you're voting to leave the travel policy as is. If you're voting no, you're voting against that motion. Okay?
Hadcock is aye, correct? Okay. Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Wa?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mason?
No.
Peterson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach? Davis?
Okay, motion passes seven to three, so the motion to deny prevails. Okay? Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Item one oh three, Deb, if you would, please.
One oh three is authorize mayor and finance office to sign amendment to the contract for private development tax increment district number thirty-five between Doyle Estes and the city of Rapid City. Do we have to say what it says on here? Okay, move. I'll yield the floor. Floor.
Okay, could we have a motion, please? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion?
Change that's not.
Nope, that is a, I believe this one is. The one we need to change is one oh five.
This one is.
Okay. So discussion on that motion, dealing with item one oh three. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
Marsha, if we didn't prove this tonight, um, what would happen with this allocation? Or this amendment?
These are the amendments to the tax increment district number thirty-five that you processed, uh, with revised project plan two weeks ago, three weeks ago at your last council meeting. There would not be a mechanism for transferring those funds to the developer in accordance with the project plan, if the developer's agreement is not revised.
So if we didn't transfer the funds to developer, he would be out how much?
And the reallocation is for that middle column of items. The changes, increase and decrease.
Which would be a total of five fourteen?
No. The changes are forty thousand dollars, uh, for drainage, fourteen thousand for engineering design.
So it's fifty.
And eleven hundred dollars for WREA. There's also a payment of five thousand dollars to the city of Rapid City.
So a total of how much?
Sixty-four, sixty-five, sixty-six thousand dollars.
Okay. And legally, do we have to do this in order to pay back, um, the developer? Legally, we have to pay him back, otherwise, what would happen?
We don't have to pay him back, but again, the project plan was approved, and this is to implement the actions of the revised project plan.
So the project plan, those allocations or those projects have not been done yet, we have to allocate them, and then he goes and gets them done for these prices.
No, it, when this project plan came forward, this was for the final readjustment of quantity of dollar amounts for each line item.
Do we get receipts for this, or we just, um?
If the project plan is approved, then one of the next steps would be, project plan is approved, the developer's agreement signed off on, then the finance officer will require to have certified costs.
I guess where I'm going here is we still have a road that we haven't finished, um, and it's adding to, uh, our cost and the county cost, which haven't been finished, and we're reallocating and we're working deals, uh, with developers that still need to finish some of our roads in Rapid City, and, um, that's why I won't be in favor of this. There's a point where you gotta play some hardball so we can get some of our stuff done. Um, people are still waiting out there and have waited for ten years. So it's unfortunate, and I don't know how we get that done, but maybe sometimes you have to play a little hardball with people and switch some of these costs and some of this agreements that we want to do with people, or reallocating TIF money, uh, and make some kind of deals where we can get things done in Rapid City without having to go into litigation for everything we do. So I'll be saying no on this. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is for approval. Further discussion, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, Marsha, does these changes fit within the, the guidelines of this TIF when it was originally put together?
The council approved the revisions to the TIF three weeks ago at your last council meeting. This is actually the project plan and implementing the changes that you approved.
Right. And I understand that, I mean, but particularly at the beginning of the, I've been in on some of the, the TIF processes, which have really been drastically changed and reduced, but the previous, when this originally started, this TIF originally started, I mean, it hasn't changed, the dollar amount is the same, it's just, I mean, it seems to be that, you know, almost every TIF we've done, that they've changed the costs around from one point to another point. Is that correct?
It's very common for tax increment financing district at the end of it to reallocate among line items, yes.
Yes, we're not doing anything that's out of the ordinary for anybody, or?
No, we've done the same things for city tax increment financing districts, where the city up front of the cost and reallocated among line items at the end of the project.
And I understand some of the intent that some situations, but I also understand that holding, holding, uh, uh, business decisions or entities, they should be all standing on their own, on their own. Uh, I mean, we could argue, um, any business decision, uh, you know, based upon another decision that was made previously in a different area, and, and, and there's, there's ramifications, or not ramifications, let's say one, and there, there's ways to, to come to conclusions on that, and I think that that particular situation is working its way through the process, and, and, uh, you know, I, I know that, uh, some, you know, I've, I've voted for these in the past, I've approved them, I've approved them for several developers throughout the community, several TIF projects throughout the community, um, trying to hold them at, uh, each individual entity at its own and let them stand on their own two feet. Uh, I'm obviously going to approve this one tonight, well, long as it fits the guidelines, the process, they're going through the same certification process that, that everybody else has to go through, I mean, it's, we're not going to change anything there, so everything's pretty much the same. Is that correct, Marsha?
Correct. The certification will be done through the finance office, the final cost.
I mean, it, I understand that there's, there's, uh, opportunities or obstacles in another area, and that, that, that has worked in itself through the system, and hope at some time there'll be some resolution, uh, but not any different than what we've done to my arguments with the, the sign people, arguments with Melody Acres, all those people. Businesses have individual rights just like people do, so, uh, moving forward, that, that's my, uh, reasoning for supporting these. Thank you.
Okay, the motion on the floor is for approval. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed?
No.
Uh, let's take a quick, let's take a quick roll call.
Kroger?
Aye.
Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Wa?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mason?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach? Davis?
Aye.
Hadcock?
Eight to two.
Right.
Motion passes eight to two. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion. Item one oh four, please, Deb, if you would.
It is authorize mayor and finance office to sign third revised contract for private development tax increment district number thirty-six between DTH LLC and the Rap, and the city of Rapid City, and I yield the floor.
Move to.
Can we have a second, please?
Second.
We have a motion and second for approval dealing with item one oh four. Discussion on that motion, let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
My point here is that there's got to be a point where people are held accountable for their work. We do that with contractors, and we don't do it with developers at this point. A lot of times, it takes the political will to play hardball in order to get the same thing done, and I think people are willing to play, but we let so many people go in what, uh, we call, uh, in our course, in our account of non-accountability. We do it in everything we do, a lot of times with government, so people know, um, what we say is not really what we do in government. Uh, we just play by political will, so it's unfortunate. Um, it's not that I have a personal, uh, problem with this man, um, in a sense, I just want, uh, the roads done, and I want, uh, this, um, what, what makes this any different than the other, uh, developments that he's done? If you've done it once, uh, what makes you not do it again? And what makes litigation not come at this point as well? Um, there's got to be some accountability for developers as well as, uh, people in, in government. Thank you.
Let's go to Alderman Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I feel somewhat compelled to justify my decision in this process, and as I had mentioned earlier, I think that any businessperson in the community who, uh, operates within this community has a risk. I understand that, and, and the city has safeguards. Uh, I mean, I'm not, I, the fear of jeopardizing what's happening here, I mean, I, I, I'm not sure that, um, it's really fair to suggest, uh, the outcome of, of a pending litigation, and, I mean, I understand that there's, there's feelings that run on both sides, and I'm sure that if particular people had their opportunity to, to argue their side, um, they may have a different opinion of it, uh, so just moving forward on it, I, I, I think it's appropriate that we, that we look at this as an individual merit, look at it as it, as the council approved this TIF, which had I been on the council before or previously, may, may or may not have, don't know the circumstances, but it's nothing out of the ordinary. I don't want anybody to think that I'm doing something special for somebody in particular or anything like that, I just, but I, or not doing something I shouldn't, should do either, and so I feel somewhat justified in, in my decision-making process, as I did earlier with some of the other businesspeople, explain my decisions, because it makes it easier for people to explain when they, when they see how I vote on things, so it's particularly, this, if it, it has to do with the streets in, in the subdivision out there, that's going through the process, I mean, there'll be an outcome at some point in time. I think, uh, everybody has that opportunity, however the process needs to take place, and we could argue whether, who's at fault or whatever the case may be. I mean, we could argue that, and, and I think it, this is probably not the appropriate place to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock. Motion, go ahead.
In the past, I don't think I, I, um, did this to just this particular developer, I've done this for these revised, um, tax increment districts, unless they are for infrastructure instead of being the bank for developers, um, I have not approved them. I think sometimes we use us for the bank in order to come back in projects that didn't cash flow for them, and then we take it over by a contingency fund, which is huge, and we use that contingency fund, uh, to fund a project, um, that didn't cash flow for somebody. So, um, we looked at that in the past, and a lot of those contingencies were used for that. Um, so bottom line is, it wasn't just this developer personally, it was many of the developers that were using us more as a bank when their stuff didn't cash flow and we came back for more, uh, changes in their projects and called it whatever they needed to, so, um, that's where I'm coming from in this, and as well as, uh, I think sometimes we have to play a little hardball in, in government in order to get some of the things done that we need done as well for the constituents.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval, item one oh, one oh four. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion pass, just, real quick roll call, please.
Costello?
Aye.
Quaker?
No.
Wa?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mason?
No.
Peterson?
Aye.
Wyffenbach?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Hadcock?
No.
Kroger?
Seven to three.
Right.
Motion passes seven to three. Item one oh five, please, Deb, if you would.
One oh five is authorize mayor and finance office to sign second amendment to the agreement between the city of Rapid City and DTH LLC regarding the project responsibilities and project cash flow for the construction of a water reservoir and water booster station for tax increment district fifty-four Rainbow Ridge. Yield the floor.
Move to.
Okay, we have a motion and second for approval. Now, there again, keep in mind, this is where we made the correction at the beginning of the agenda, you did list item, uh, this is district item thirty-four, we should've read fifty-four, we made that adjustment. Any discussion on that motion? Let's go to Alderwoman Deb Hadcock.
On one oh five and one oh six, um, they will have, um, some revised, uh, second amendments. This is because of Robert Ellis and his group that need this for infrastructure, they are using these, uh, because of the construction timelines and some of the things that actually makes sense for this, and for one oh five and one oh six, I will approve it because it's something that's well needed over there, not only for the developer, but for people in that district for water pressure, fire flow. So makes sense to approve this, and it was also explained, uh, with some, uh, good intentions of where that's going. Thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval of item one oh five. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. One oh six, please.
One oh six is authorize mayor and finance office to sign fourth amendment to the contract for private development tax increment district number fifty-four. Yield the floor.
Can we have a motion, please?
Move to.
We have a motion and second for approval, any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing, there we go, let's go to Alderman Jordan Mason.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make, uh, sure that I'm looking at the right ones. So number fifty-four, this is the Rainbow Ridge, um, district, just to clarify.
That would be correct.
Yes, and with that, uh, if I can direct a question to our public works director, Robert So number fifty-four, this is the Rainbow Ridge district, just to clarify.
That would be correct.
And with that, if I can direct a question to our public works director, Robert Ellis. I'm just curious about the drainage issue that came up a while ago with this particular subdivision. And I'd just like a status on that, given that we were talking about a fourth amendment on this contract.
Robert, I think what he's talking about is the runoff. Go ahead.
It's been a couple of weeks since I've been up there, so I'm not sure what efforts were made by the developer to do some regrading up there. I do believe that the project that was recently awarded to do the water main and the road building up to the top of the hill does encompass some of the grading that was necessary. I'm kind of looking over to Mr. Estes and he's nodding his head. So that's my understanding.
Thank you. And I just, the reason I ask, I just want to make sure that as we proceed forward, everyone's, you know, equally participating in this project and, you know, the people that live in that area are being adequately protected. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is for approval dealing with item 106. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. On the public works committee items, item 107. Alderman Quaker, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Item 107 is a memorandum of understanding with destination Rapid City. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 108.
Item 108 is approval of a request for fence height exception to allow six-foot fence in lieu of a four-foot fence in the front yard setback located at forty-five nineteen Steamboat Circle. Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second dealing with item 108. Motion is for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Item 109, please.
Item 109 is approved with stipulations, a request for fence height exception to allow maximum sixteen-foot fence in lieu of an eight-foot fence in the general commercial zoning district located at Stumer Road and Black Hills Boulevard. Yield to the floor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second with approval with stipulations. Further discussion on that motion? Alderman, Sam Quaker.
Thank you. Marcia, this is something that telecommunications companies will benefit from.
On item 109? No.
Further discussion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item 110 is casino buffer zones for residential neighborhoods. Move to continue to public works and have the numbers brought forward on the effects of a two-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to continue this item to our next public works committee meeting, which is scheduled for Amber. Do you know what that is? September fourteenth. Further discussion on that motion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 115.
Item 111 is amendment to...
111, I'm sorry.
Item 111 is amendment to ordinance two-point-six-zero-point-one-six-zero E and F and related city policies to require signposting and notices for comp plan, comprehensive plan amendments. Public works forwarded without recommendation. Planning commission's recommendation was adoption of option number three, and that is my motion for discussion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve option number three. Further discussion on that motion? Further discussion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 112. Go ahead, Pauline.
Item 112 is a bid for two thousand and eleven truck specifications for a patrol truck. We did receive three bids on this. Advertising authority was twenty-seven thousand dollars. Recommendation is to award the bid to the low bidder McKee Ford Lincoln Mercury, Inc. in the amount of twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to award the bid to McKee Ford Lincoln Mercury, Incorporated for a bid of twenty-five thousand, six hundred dollars. Further discussion on that motion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 113.
That is the two thousand and eleven police car specifications for three Ford police interceptor, interceptors. These were also opened on August twenty-fourth, two thousand and ten. We received one bid from McKee Ford Lincoln Mercury for twenty-six thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-four dollars each for a total of seventy-eight thousand, eight fifty-two. The advertising authority was seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to appro, approve a bid to McKee Ford Linky, Lincoln Mercury, Incorporated for a bid of twenty-six thousand, two eighty-four for three vehicles for a total of seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two. Further discussion on that motion? We'll go to Bonnie Peterson.
Thank you. I noticed that they're wanting more for one of these than they did for the truck. So I'm just wondering if, if that's considered a good value, because it seems like if you're going to buy three of them, that you should come in cheaper than your truck. But I don't know if someone from the police department or someone could speak to that about, or I don't know, is one kind cheaper than the other? Or you feel like that's pretty much what it should be?
I would have to refer to Ms. Katie.
I believe the, I mean, the truck did come in at lower price, just due to the initial cost of the vehicle. I can't talk specifically to, to what the specs were, but the, the truck is a, a new addition to our fleet as in new. We're using a truck to replace one of the patrol cars. That's all I know for right now.
Okay, well, I don't have a real strong opinion where the other, it just seems like if you're going to buy three of them, that you should come in lower than the, buying one. But I don't know. Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion for approval? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item number 114.
This is a bid opening, or a bid award for Cliff Drive Santerre Sewer Extension, which is open August thirty-first, two thousand and eleven. We did receive six bids on this. The recommendation is to award the bid to RCS Construction for the base bid alternates one and, two and three for a total amount of five thirty-nine oh fifty-three eighty-eight. And we also need part of the motion to have that with the concurrence of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve RCS Construction for a total bid of five thirty-nine zero fifty-three eighty-eight with the inclusion of what, Pauline?
With the, the concurrence of the Department of Environment and Natural Resources.
All right, thank you. Further discussion on that motion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 115.
That is a bid award for the water reclamation spoil pile removal, opened on August thirty-one, two thousand and ten. We received five bids on that project. The recommendation is to award the bid to KRM Concrete LLC in the amount of twelve thousand, six ninety-eight thirty.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid to KRM Concrete LLC for twelve thousand, six hundred and ninety-eight dollars, thirty cents. Further discussion on that motion? Uh, Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have a question for Robert. Robert, that particular project, where does that add on Parkview?
I'm sorry, did we, I, we skipped one. I'm sorry. That's my fault. One fifteen is the Parkview Drive Storm Inlet Construction. The bids I award, or I, I mentioned were that, but I had said earlier that was for the water reclamation spoil pile removal. So my apologies.
I know what you meant.
This is on Parkview, which is going to be just south of Centennial Street. There's that major drainage way that crosses right next to there. I have a map here.
I, I was just wondering, I just wondered how close it was to the softball fields and, I mean, is it?
It'll be north of the softball fields. You can see the softball fields down here. Our project is a couple of blocks north.
Is it just like in the road or something, or is it?
Yeah, this is just putting in a storm sewer inlet on the roads so the storm water that's in the gutter will fall into the inlet and go into the drainage channel.
We're putting extra storm sewer. Wasn't that engineered when they built that development to have a specific amount of these storm sewers?
Um, yeah, I'm sure it was engineered with the development and...
Thank you.
Okay, further discussion on the motion for approval? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Item 116.
And this one will be for the water reclamation spoil pile remover part, project that was open on August thirty-one, two thousand and ten. We received five bids. The recommendation is to award the bid to Hills Material Company in the amount of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid to Hills Material Company for a hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five dollars. Further discussion on that motion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 117.
That is a bid award for well number ten pump replacement, which was open on August thirty-one, two thousand and ten. If you remember, this is the one that we had bid previously and only received one bid. We did go out and advertise again. We received three bids. The recommendation is to award the bid to Lane Christensen Company in the amount of eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars and twenty cents.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid to Lane Christensen Company for eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars, twenty cents. Further discussion on that motion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. 118.
This is to award the bid at, at the Mount, Mountain View and Mount Calvary Cemetery's irrigation system phase three. This is a CIP project. We did receive four bids on this project. Recommendation is to award the bid to Second Nature for the base bid and alternates one and two for a total amount of ninety-nine thousand, four fourteen twenty-four.
Move approval. Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the bid to Second Nature for a total of ninety-nine thousand, four hundred and fourteen dollars, twenty-four cents. Further discussion on that motion? Being none. All in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. We're on to mayor's items. There's nothing other items from the mayor or council items. So that moves us to item 119 and a vision 2012 update. Mr. Ellis.
Very long and detailed report to give here. Just kidding. No, I have one, one update to make. The Sixth Street downtown re, uh, construction project was awarded. We, we will be allocating one point five-two-two million dollars that was authorized for that project. And that will leave the balance for that project at zero. So that's the only update I have.
Yep, very good.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to acknowledge. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. We are on to the public hearing items. These are items 120 through 128 inclusive. Chair would look for motion to open the public comment period on items 120 through 128. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. I have no speaker request forms for any of the items on the remainder of the agenda. We do leave the open, the public hearing open at this time. We will go on to the continued public hearing consent items. These are items 125 through, I'm sorry, 120 through 125 inclusive. Chair would ask if we need to have any of those removed. Would Marcia go? Nope, we're good. How about from the rest of the staff or council? If not, chair would look for a motion to approve the continued public hearing consent items, items 120 through 125 per the recommendations on the printed agenda. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. That is the end of the, the continued public hearing consent items. Chair would look for motion to close the public hearing items, items 120 through 128 inclusive. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. We're on to the consent public hearing items. These are items 126 through 128 inclusive. Marcia, do we need to have any of those polled?
To non-consent?
Oh, I'm sorry. Consent item hearings. Okay, what do we got here? Non-consent? Why do we have a duplication here? Am I reading this wrong? Consent public hearing items 126 through 128, and then we also have the non-consent public hearing items 126 through 128. So we'll take those all as non-consent items. How about that? Okay, so we were, we're on to item 126. Let's see who's in the robe. Alderman Quaker, could you please read that in? Item 126, please.
Item 126 is authorized mayor and finance officer to sign the waiver of right to protest a future assessment for the installation of sidewalk and additional pavement along Double Eagle Court as they abut several lots on the green number two subdivision located at fourteen-one-thirty and fourteen-one-twenty-five Double Eagle Court. Recommendation is to approve, and that is my motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 127, please.
Item 127 is a request by fiscal and surveying and consulting engineers for Randy Long for variance to the subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to provide sidewalk to reduce the pavement width from ninety to sixty-nine point five feet and to reduce the right-of-way width from one hundred and ten to a hundred feet along Double Eagle Court per sixteen point one-sixth of municipal code located at fourteen-one-thirty and fourteen-one-twenty-five Double Eagle Court. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations, and that is my motion.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second for approval with stipulations dealing with item 127. Any discussion on that motion? Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. 128, please.
Item 128 is a request by the city for variance to subdivision regulations to waive the requirement to provide a sidewalk along the north side of Jackson Boulevard to waive the requirement to install water along a portion of Jackson Boulevard, to waive the requirement to install sewer and to dedicate additional right-of-way along Jackson Boulevard to reduce the width of access easements from fifty-nine to twenty-four feet and twenty-five feet respectively, to waive the requirement to construct a twenty-six-foot wide paved surface curb gutter sidewalk street light conduit water and sewer along a twenty-four-foot wide access easement, to reduce the pavement width of a twenty-five-foot wide access easement from twenty-six to twenty-five feet, and to waive the requirement to construct curb gutter sidewalk street light conduit water and sewer along a twenty-five-foot wide access easement per sixteen point one-sixth of municipal code located at the Clegg Horn Springs State Fish Hatchery southwest of the intersection of Jackson Boulevard and Chapel Lane. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations in part and deny in part as per the planning commission's recommendation, and that is my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Did anybody want to have him read that again? Very good. Any further discussion? Motion on the floor is for approval with stipulations in part and deny in part per the planning commission's recommendations dealing with item 128. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Pauline, the bill list.
The bill list presented before you is eight million, six sixteen, six forty-four, twenty-six. I do need to add a claim for the South Dakota Municipal League for the annual conference in the amount of one thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars. And I also need to remove a claim to Bell Four Environmental in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars and twenty cents. So the new balance is eight million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, forty-nine dollars and six cents.
Tell me again. Dollar amount is eight million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, forty-nine dollars and forty-six cents?
Just six cents.
Six cents. Very good. Okay, can we have a motion? Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval of the, of the bill list as amended for a grand total of five million, I'm sorry, eight million, five hundred and thirty-one thousand, forty-nine dollars and six cents. Correct?
Yes.
Discussion on that motion. Let's go to Alderman, Jordan Mason.
Thank you. I realize it's awfully late, and I just wanted to ask one quick question, actually two, after reading the bill list about a day ago. I just had a question with one of the items that's labeled as the South Dakota Codified Law, and it looks like we purchased that. And that's item Victor zero-nine-two-six-one-five-zero. And I'm just wondering what that is.
Can you give us a page number?
Oh, sure. Get more specific. Sorry about that. I should have, uh, six-one-five-zero. Yeah, that's with the Western Payment Center on page, actually, page two of one-eighty-three. And it says the twenty-five, I'm just wondering if that's just a, a set of codified laws or what exactly that purchase is.
I think that's the, the annual subscription, but I'll ask Jason Green if I'm not mistaken. That's actually a subscription for either the updates or the actual purchase. Mr. Green.
I can't say for certain without actually going back to the purchase order. I believe it's for the annual supplements to the code books. Every year, July one, new statutes take effect and West publishes a new supplement for each of the code books. So...
of the code books, so based on the dollar amount there, I'm virtually certain that that is a set of supplements for one of the code book sets that the city owns.
Sweet. And then my last question was actually on the very first page. I was just wondering, window frosting, what exactly that was? Just out of curiosity.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Window frosting and the amount of $49.60, if I recall off the top of my head, from Katie Leclair. I'm just wondering what window frost, like what were you using that?
Oh, I know what that is. What that is, is in the mayor's office, when we actually redid it, there's actually, when you look at it, there's basically, basically a film that you put over to basically block underneath it, so you can't actually see the back of the computers and so forth from the outside. What it is, it's sort of a screening film that actually goes on the inside of the window.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I can't believe I knew that. Okay, Mr. Kroger.
Thank you, Mayor. After the lengthy discussion we had about approving travel requests, one of the last items that Pauline put on the bill list was an item that I approved this morning for travel. How much was it, Pauline? 1,000?
$177.95.
The total amount on the travel is $1,960. That's actually for 22 different people to attend.
Okay, correct, and that's for Municipal League. That's going to be held here in Rapid City.
That is correct.
But I just thought after the lengthy discussion we had regarding that, that you should be well aware that I made that request, or I approved that this morning. Thank you.
Very good. Motion on the floor is for approval of the bill list as amended for a grand total of Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Mr. Green, executive session.
Yes, and it will be for the purposes permitted by SCL 1-25-2.
Okay, do we have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to go into executive sessions for purposes permitted by SCL 1-25-2. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes for an executive session. We have a motion. Come out of executive session.
Slow move.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.